This is happening in the water polo specifically.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I think we can believe the, begin the April 7th study session agenda. And we start out always with these, the citizen comment on agenda items. And I see we have four people signed up, starting with Susan Miller. These are usually restricted to the items that we're discussing tonight. And it looks like they are.
Great, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. It's wonderful that you kind of have this community get together every other week. That's unique. My name is Susan Miller. I'm the mom of three farmer graduates and a current sophomore at Wheat Ridge High School. I was president of Wheat Ridge High School PTSA for a number of years. I'm currently the VP of PTSA, co-chair of SAC, accountability, Farmers 5000 volunteer, post-Palm volunteer, STEM volunteer. I could say, you could say I'm an engaged parent. So why am I here? To talk about the vitality of the community of Wheat Ridge. We face a tough reality in our articulation area of seven elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school. So let's start with the data. On the 2016 CMS Park Assessment, 882 students at Wheat Ridge, seven elementary schools, 62% of all students in grades three through to sixth grade failed to meet or exceed state English language arts standards. 882 children. 996 children, 70%, failed to meet state math standards. Given this performance, it isn't surprising that 50% of incoming ninth graders at Wheat Ridge High School read at seventh grade or lower, and 25% are reading at a fourth grade or lower. For this reason, Wheat Ridge High School has invested its Student-Based Budgeting Funds, or SBB, in literacy interventionists and extra counselors to meet these students' needs. If they can't read well enough to access high school content, they are at grave risk of substance abuse, classroom disruption, and dropping out. And Wheat Ridge High School has delivered best-in-the-district performance in terms of student achievement growth for all students, even as they have built high-performing new programs like STEM and career pathways. So despite the obstacles, Griff and his team have kept it going. This is in the context of in which the district demanded that Wheat Ridge pick up $150,000 cost of two GT specialists that they have always paid for since the center's placement by the district 10 years ago. Rather than celebrating and trying to learn from their replication and repeat Wheat Ridge's successes, they presented Griff with an impossible choice between throwing our poor readers, our vulnerable students, and our GT-centered students against each other under the proverbial bus. At the same time, enrollment is declining at the high school. Wheat Ridge pays for our literacy interventionists, and the district's failure to send us students who are prepared for high school is not realistic. Kevin Carroll insisted that SBB funding be paid for by, for GT specialists be paid for by SBB. And faced with this unrealistic, impossible choice between our most vulnerable and our GT, Griff and his two top assistant principals resigned, effective at the end of the school year, and the district has since backtracked, but the damage has been done. The city council should be very clear about the consequences of moving the GT center to another school. Wheat Ridge High School will quite frankly lose faculty and students and become a Title I, just like Jefferson and Alameda. The economic damage this will cause to property value and retail sales in Wheat Ridge will be long-lasting, and many orders of magnitude greater than the $150,000 expense that has triggered this disastrous chain of events. So as the district talks about spending $25 million or so to move sixth grade to middle school, perhaps we could also have the district talk about spending $1.5 million over 10 years, just 10 years. Billion-dollar budget times 10, that's $10 billion. So $1.5 million, just $1.5 over that 10, to secure the longevity of that GT center and help support and secure the longevity of Wheat Ridge High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ian Clark.
Hello, my, my name's Ian Clark, and I'd like to donate my minutes to John Clark.
To John. You're going to wait till the end? I see we have also Van Clark. Evan, oh, I see the E's on the outside, Evan.
Hi, my name is Evan Clark, and I'd also like to donate my five, uh, three minutes to my dad.
Okay, thank you. Hi, John.
Thanks, guys. My name is John Clark. I live at 4665 Swadley. Don't freak out, I'm not going to take nine minutes, just needed a couple extra. Sometimes I go on a roll. So as long as we're starting with schools and starting with who we are, thank you, Susan, I'll tell you who I am. I think everybody, almost everybody in the room knows me. But I'll tell you who I am. I'm a third-generation Wheat Ridgeian, or Wheat Ridger, whatever you want to call it. I have two boys, right there. They are both enrolled in Wheat Ridge schools. I attended Reed Street Elementary when it was Reed Street Elementary, went on to Wheat Ridge Junior High, which is no longer a junior high, and graduated Jefferson High School. Sorry, Griff, I lived on this side of Wadsworth. I am the current PTA president at Everett Middle School, PTSA member over at Wheat Ridge High School, and the STEM Booster Club president at Wheat Ridge High School. I'm a parent volunteer at Jefferson 4H Livestock Council. I went through the Wheat Ridge Civic Academy, right here in this chamber, sat on a couple committees after that. I'm a pretty, I'm a regular here at city council meetings, I think everybody can attest to that. Helped a few political campaigns, and just recently became a small business owner on 38th Avenue. I also own four properties within the Jefferson County School District, three of which are within Wheat Ridge. So I pay plenty of property tax in case anybody's wondering. So I worked in the private sector, still do, for 35-plus years. And they always told me in the private sector, he who writes the check is the boss. So in a room, roomful of public sector employees, such as yourself, and no Bruce Springsteen that I can see, I'm going to go ahead and like to call myself the boss today. I'm also a client of Jefferson County Public Schools because I've hired you to educate my two children. So not only am I the boss because I'm writing the check, I'm also the client. But let's start with the city. I think it's time for the city to stand up to the school district that is disseminating our schools. This is not new, this is not something that just happened two weeks ago. It started with me all the way back at Martinson. How many years ago was that? It's got to be, God, 11, 12 years. And unfortunately, we in Wheat Ridge don't have the luxury or the privilege of an Arvada or a Lakewood that has multitudes of schools, that they could throw one under the bus, they could throw one to the dog, so to speak. And they could still tout the greatness and the beauty of the others. We have but one high school, and we have but one middle school. And the district is constantly tearing all of our schools up. Threats of closure, true closure, pulling funds. I could go on and on and on, but I only got nine minutes. So I spent a lot of time in this chamber listening to everyone talk about this vision that we have for a great city, a great community. And I like to buy into it, I really do. But history shows us, with great schools comes great cities. History also shows us, if you don't have great schools, you'll never achieve a great city. So it starts and finishes at the school. And you guys can sit around here for the next 20 years and beat your head up against the wall, but you'll never achieve a great city without a great school, and it's great schools. So I know we spent over six years and over a million dollars talking about the lanes on 38th Avenue. Anything about the schools in that time? Creature 38th boasted 800-plus people showed up to draw trees and planters and cut out little drawings. Anybody want to guess how many people were at my last PTA meeting? Jeff, you don't count. I know. So you're the only one that doesn't get a guess. So we've had meetings about Walmart, numerous meetings about Walmart. How many about, how many people attended a school board meeting at that same time? Everybody went to meetings about the left-turn lanes on Wadsworth. What about a back-to-school night? Anybody achieve that? We've had meetings not only about the green, but on the green. How about the school that stands behind it? The district is destroying our Wheat Ridge schools, and I have to ask why. I asked around, and I got three different answers. Could it be voter turnout? Our demographics in Wheat Ridge are a little older, and maybe we don't vote their way? I don't know those numbers. Maybe the district has a different set of numbers than the city, because the city keeps telling me families are moving in, but the district keeps closing schools. Which is it? Are the kids moving in, or are the kids moving out? Third, maybe it's just flat jealousy. Maybe the fact that Wheat Ridge schools keep doing great things, including the stamina steam and the crew over at the middle school, in spite of district policy. Maybe we could send somebody from the city, anybody, maybe we could send them over there simply to ask why. Without great schools, you can forfeit about your vision, about hope, economic development, Steve. Walkability, sustainability, Madam Mayor. Just stop beating your head up against the wall. Maybe the next time the district is giving the city the shaft, someone can turn around and grab it, start beating them over the head with it. And what about this dysfunctional district in the school board? You all asked for a raise. In the private sector, your bosses said no. Why is that? In the private sector, somebody might say, if you went and asked for a raise, the boss said no, maybe you don't understand the job. Maybe you're just inept. Maybe you have an inefficient use of time. And maybe you're just turning out an inferior product. But the next time, next time you wonder why your boss said no to your raise, maybe you should look in the mirror. I'm so tired of the whining about not having enough. We need more, we need more. We need to cut program funding. We need to force people out of a job. You can always do what the kids do when they don't have enough funding. Anybody up for a car wash, bake sale? Why do the kids always have to fundraise with cookie dough, butter braids, dyed denotes? I've been to a million of them. My wife and kids are going over to IPI right after this on a STEM fundraiser. A million of them. Why do the kids always have to do that? Maybe we could get the district employees and the board, maybe they could do their part. Maybe they could have a fundraiser. Maybe they could have a bake sale. Thanks.
Thank you, John. I don't believe we have any other speakers tonight. And our first subject on the agenda tonight is the Wheat Ridge Education Alliance. Will you be speaking then for us, Genevieve?
Yep, I'll start, thank you. Thank you to our speakers who came this evening to talk about this subject. And I'd like to say thank you for our guests that are here this evening. I know you have a lot of things going on, and we appreciate the time that you've taken to come to the city of Wheat Ridge and share with us about your schools and about the district. This evening, I'm going to have each of our guests introduce themselves, give a one, two, two, three-minute description of what they do, and kind of update us on either their job or their schools. And then I'm going to have Ally tell us about the superintendent search, and then Karen will tell us briefly about the principal changes that we can see in the next year. And then we're going to have somewhat of a panel discussion, where if you have specific questions on either the information that was sent to you, or questions about things that were said this evening, we can do a panel discussion at that point. About the Wheat Ridge Education Alliance, I'm just going to give a little bit of a brief update on it. For people that are listening that may not know, the Education Alliance was formed about three years ago. The mission is to facilitate the creation and maintenance of relationships between and among parents, schools, the local business community, and the city of Wheat Ridge, with the goal of informing citizens about the community, schools, and fostering programs involving those parties for the advancement of academic excellence. And there's several city people, school people, that meet together about every other month, and that's the Education Alliance Board. And then I also meet with school representatives. We have 15 schools that we work with. I've met with them probably two to three times a year about issues in the schools and also projects like the Carnation Festival. The Education Alliance also works with our city public information officer and also the PR company that works with the city. And this was the media update that you all got. These are articles that we got out into the community about what's going on in our local schools. Two things I'd like to mention before we keep going. On Wednesday of this week, Martinson has been repurposed in to be a safety center, and it's used for training for SWAT and other police and emergency EMTs for school emergencies. That is going to have an opening this Wednesday, April 19th, from 3:30 to 5:00, and I'd like you all to attend if you're able to. It's going to be a great community event, and there'll be tours of the property, and you can see how Martinson has been repurposed. The other event I wanted to mention, although I think Jeff's going to mention it also, is on May 10th, there will be an open house for the 50th anniversary of Everett Middle School. So at this time, I'd like to ask each of our guests to do an introduction of who you are, and just a slight update about your school or your position within Wheat Ridge. And then from there, we'll take it back to Ally for the superintendent.
I am Ally LaSalle. I am a school board member for District 3, which covers the Wheat Ridge Articulation Area, Ralston Valley Articulation Area, Arvada West Articulation Area, and part of Golden. Do you want me to give you a little update right now on what we're doing, or would you like these guys to?
Hi, I'm Karen Quabec. I'm an achievement director for Jeffco Schools, and I supervise and support elementary schools in the Conifer and the Wheat Ridge area. So I have the eight elementary schools specifically in Wheat Ridge. And Jennifer, I think if I heard you correctly, you want us to pause on kind of an updates in terms of what's happening? Okay.
Hello, I'm Griff Worth. I'm the principal at Wheat Ridge High School. Probably much like the mayor, I run a small city, almost. I do have for the council members just a flyer, so you can see a little bit more of many of the things that are going on at Wheat Ridge High School, and may have a chance to talk about that more, some of it a little bit later.
I'm Cheryl Clay. I'm the principal at Color Strand Elementary, and this is my first year there as the principal, but I have been there for six years. So, um, do we share anything? Okay.
And I'm Ann Decola. I'm the principal at Stober Elementary, also my first year at Stober. My 16th year in the district, been a teacher, peer evaluator, instructional coach, and assistant principal.
My name is Jeff Gomez, and this is, I'm the principal at Everett Middle School. And this is my sixth year there, and my 25th year in a Wheat Ridge school. I started out teaching at Stevens Elementary when it was the old building, moved into the new one. Principal at Pennington for two, principal at Wilmore Davis for 10, and again, my sixth year at Everett. And I think I've got a pretty good background of Wheat Ridge and its schools, from Sheridan to Wadsworth, Wadsworth to Kipling, and then just moving further west with demographic changes like Griff. So wide history in Wheat Ridge.
As most of you know, we are in the midst of a superintendent search. And where we are right now, on Thursday, we will, the, the position closed last Monday, and Ray and Associates, which is the firm that we hired to guide us through this search and handle the search, they have been screening, paper screening, all of the applicants. And on Thursday night of this week, we will be having an executive session with the school board, when they will present to us the screened candidates who meet the qualifications that our community, there were forums throughout the community, there were 4,000 people who filled out the survey on what do you look for in a leader, what are your 13 qualities you look for in a leader for the school district? We had 1,000 comments attached to those. And together, the community and the board came up with 13 qualities that we think would, that we would like to see in our next leader. So that is what they are screening the candidates based on. They were doing that all last week and this week. And Thursday, they will present us with the people who they think meet those, those requirements. And we will take a look, on Thursday during executive session, we will have the opportunity to take a look at all the paperwork and short videos of the, the people that they present to us. And, and we will also have an opportunity to ask about others. And from there, we will be weeding it down to people who we think will be, that we would like to interview, and the interviews take place next week, on the 26th, all day. So.
And when do you hope to have a selection?
We are hoping to have a selection by the first week of May. That is our goal. Are there any questions or anything you think I need to add to that, Karen? Any more questions about that?
Thank you. You will look at several possible superintendents and then break it down to maybe two or three, and then a decision later.
Yes, that is our hope.
The board will do the actual decision-making, that's really what I wanted to know.
The board does the actual decision-making, yes.
Maybe, Jen, is it okay if we maybe do some introductions, so some of these folks maybe know who we are?
I'm sorry.
I'll start. I'm Patrick Goff, I'm the city manager. Jen?
Genevieve Wooden, City Council.
George Pond, District 3, Wheat Ridge City Council.
Jerry Tulio, City Treasurer and a teacher at Wheat Ridge High School in special education and English.
Kristy Davis, District 2, Wheat Ridge alumni, Wilmore Davis alumni.
Tim Fitzgerald, District 3, and I graduated in the very first class from the present building of Wheat Ridge High School.
Larry Matthews, District 4. Zachary Urban, Arvada High School.
Janice Hoppie, District 1.
Monica Duran, District 1.
To my right is the clerk.
Janelle Shaver, City Clerk. I'm a native of Wheat Ridge and a former elementary school teacher.
I'm learning things here. Joyce J. Mayer, and my daughter is a graduate of Wheat Ridge High School. Now, please continue.
Okay, I think we'll have Karen give her update on the principal changes.
Absolutely. So in the Wheat Ridge area, as you heard me mention, we've got eight elementary schools. And this year, we welcomed two new principals, and they're sitting with us tonight. Ann Decola joined us at Stober, and Cheryl Clay joined us at Color Strand. I think they're happy to report, and we're happy to report, they have survived their first year, and they've done magnificent work within their first year. One of the things we've really been focusing on in the Wheat Ridge elementary schools, which aligns with the middle school and the high school, is that idea of 21st century learning, and the idea of going deeper with students, whether it's through project-based learning, or it's through STEAM projects that we know are happening with great fidelity at the middle school and the high school, whether it's through some Socratic seminars that Ann will probably describe, or some robotics competitions that Cheryl might describe. But that's been an initiative in all of our schools, aligned to our Jeffco 2020 vision. I want to elevate that, because that is such important work for kids. And our two new leaders have embraced that learning together and have done some pretty neat work in their schools already. Moving into next year, we had one retirement at Wilmore Davis, John Martinez, who has been with us for many, many years, you probably know him. He retired actually just before spring break. We currently have an interim principal, Linda Ciccarelli, finishing out the school year. And we hired our long-term principal, Janice Fisher, to begin with us at Wilmore, starting in July. Janice is currently at Pleasant View Elementary, and she went through a very rigorous principal interview process, actually, Ann was part of that process, no, you were with a different one, sorry, Stevens, I'll talk about that next, a rigorous principal interview process. And we selected Janice to be our principal at Wilmore moving forward. At Stevens Elementary, we have hired TJ McManus, who will come to us from Denver Public Schools, where she's currently the principal of Green Valley Elementary, and has a passion for 21st century learning, has a passion for positive student culture, has a passion for community partnerships. She'll, she'll be with us moving forward. One other piece I'd like to elevate, and I promise that I can take the mic away, I'm sorry for being long-winded, I get really excited about this work. We've had a focus in our area around family partnerships. And two of our schools in the Wheat Ridge area have engaged in what's called APTT, or Academic Parent Teacher Teams, Stevens Elementary and Pennington Elementary. And it's, it's an incredible collaboration with parents, where parents come into the school periodically throughout the year in partnership with their child's teacher, and kids are in the room, they set academic goals, they together decide on some of the strategies that parents might work on at home, what's happening in the classroom, so it's aligned. They walk away with actually materials they can use with their kids, and they come back throughout the year and meet with the teachers again with kids in the room to really enhance that, that support, both between the school and home. So with two schools in the area, and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head a total number throughout Jefferson County, but I believe it's less than 10. So to have two of them in Wheat Ridge is pretty exciting. And I'll pause there, and I'll, I'm happy to answer questions or pass the mic and come back to anything that you'd like to.
Council, we received quite a bit of information about the schools. If there's questions about any of the sheets that we received, please, this would be a perfect time. Jen, you were going to come forward?
I was just going to ask each of the principals to give an update about your school, where you are now, how many students you have, anything else you'd like to tell us. And I think we'll start with the elementary, and then move to middle, and then to high school.
So at Stober, we were 296 students at our October count, which was a little bit of a decline, but we lost a program last year, the Stober North Program, which was housed at Everett Middle School. That program closed, so that kind of dictated the change in enrollment from last year to this year. Kind of to piggyback on Karen, what she was talking about, really this year, being my first year, extremely proud of the work we've done. We've been focusing on reading, as well as the 21st century learning. And so really spending a lot of time thinking about how do we not only support students with the basic skills that they need around decoding and fluency, but then also how do we engage students to be critical thinkers around reading? And so we've been working really hard on close reading, Socratic seminar in classrooms, was in a kindergarten Socratic seminar the other day, and it's just absolutely phenomenal what, what our youngest learners discuss. The other piece we've been doing, we worked with Colorado Education Initiative in January to implement design thinking into our classrooms, and kind of looking at it as a tool for creative problem-solving and flexibility of thinking, and that's been really exciting as well. So just a lot of really great things going on, really exciting work, really proud of the staff. Certainly been a challenging year in terms of, you know, potential closure and some of the things that we've faced, but been extremely proud of the community and the staff and how we've kind of moved through it, through it, and continue to really focus on students, and continuing to focus on the, the work each day. So that's kind of where we're at right now, just looking forward to kind of continuing the work next year.
And at Color Strand, again, we, our, our main focus is to focus on the whole child development, their, not only their academic needs, but their social, emotional needs, recognizing, you know, we have 236 students, and we are 80% and we are eighty percent free and reduced lunch, and so a lot of our students come in with some of those needs. And, um, I'm very proud to say that our staff is very responsive, and we have, um, we take pride in how we do address and, and support students on a daily basis with the needs that they do have. Um, which in turn, um, over time, we are definitely starting to show an increase in our achievement. Um, we, again, focusing on the twenty-first century learner, um, we have implemented a robotics program this year, as Karen has talked about. Um, and it's, um, this year, it's been done as an after-school program where students had to apply to be a part of the program. Um, they went through a whole application process and an interview process, uh, and then were accepted or denied, um, being part of the program. We actually took all of the kids that applied. And, uh, that has started, kind of the wheels turning, um, as far as our digital librarian really wanting to, to get the program off and running within the district. And so, he is partnering with some other schools and sharing some of, um, the learning and the equipment that we have to see if we can get some other schools to kind of jump on board with that, so that we could have some in-district competitions. Um, the students have really focused on not only developing the robots, but the coding that goes behind running the robots, which is, it's phenomenal, the engineering behind all of this is just outstanding. It's amazing to see third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade students, and even some first and second grade students engaging in this learning is very exciting. So moving forward into next year, we've, um, expanded the program, uh, to where we have built in time throughout the school day for, um, students that are needing some extension time, um, to, to be able to access some of that and really build it into, um, you know, the, the different areas of curriculum. So, um, he's, he's really researching and seeing where we can fit that in, so that it's an extension for students throughout their learning day. We have a lot of amazing things going on, um, it's a wonderful community. Um, our PTA board just transitioned, uh, so we will have a new PTA board starting next year. And, um, the, the PTA since I've been there, I too have been in, uh, the Wheat Ridge area my entire career for nineteen years. I was at Stevens for many years and then moved to Color Strand. And in the time that I've been at Color Strand, we started off with having literally one person on our PTA, to now we actually have a board. And we've, our last general meeting, we had thirty-seven people there. So we're continuing, we're not only growing, um, you know, academically, but we are, um, our parent involvement and community involvement is something that we've, we've really take, taken pride in, um, you know, getting people into our buildings so they can see and, uh, contribute to the amazing things that are going on. So, thanks.
Thank you, very informative.
So at Everett, uh, you know, this is my sixth year there. In the first year I was there, I wish I was the guy following the elephant parade because it was pretty crazy. Uh, we've done a lot of cleanup and a lot of culture building since that point. Uh, we have sixty-eight percent of our students that come to us from free reduced lunch, uh, single-parent homes, lots of grandparents raising their children, lots of our kids, uh, have somebody, a parent incarcerated at some point in their life. Uh, they have parents that do care about their kids, but don't have the skills or the resources necessary to provide them the kind of things that other kids in our society get. And, uh, middle school is probably the most challenging time in a, in a child's life. So we have lots of things that we deal with at Everett Middle School. I no longer feel like I need to be the guy following the elephant parade on most days, it's actually pretty calm over there. Uh, we've got a couple of things coming up. Uh, last year, I invited each of the council members to our first annual resource fair, and those couple of you that showed up, I appreciate it. Uh, that is coming up on April twenty-ninth. We decided to expand it into a carnival and make it a Saturday event from ten to two. Again, on April twenty-ninth, we're gonna have all kinds of, we're gonna have, uh, some games. Uh, we have twenty-five to thirty community resources that'll be there for our families and parents. Invited all of our elementary schools, they've kicked in monetarily and are advertising this, uh, dunk tank, bouncy castle, food, a band, uh, all kinds of fun stuff, so if you're not busy between ten and two on the twenty-ninth, please come and join us. And we're thinking we're gonna have a much bigger turnout this year than we did last year. And, uh, I know the families that came last year were appreciative of the resources that they were able to access. Uh, again, fiftieth anniversary, uh, when I started teaching at Stevens Elementary, ninety, nineteen ninety-eight, the number one question I got from my parents was, is it Everett or Wheat Ridge? Because back then Everett was the school to go to. And, uh, so it was really interesting kind of hearing about Everett back in the day, and, uh, we want to celebrate that. Most schools that do a fifty-day anniversary, it really centers around the people that are around in the community at that point. I mean, we want to do something different, so we've got a really good committee. I know, uh, Ms. Balding, right, is, uh, works for the city, and she's really helping us out with a lot of that. But we really want to make this an event that celebrates the people that have been at Everett over the fifty years. And, uh, proclamation is on May eighth, so thank you for that. And then we go to, uh, we're gonna do a celebration at Everett on the tenth. And, uh, so you're welcome to join us that night as well. Having been in schools, uh, my entire career in Wheat Ridge that have been six, fifty percent or more free reduced lunch, the biggest challenge I've had as a principal is the perceptual issues that we face. And I don't know why it is that in the Wheat Ridge community, but people like to talk about Everett and the kind of students we have there. I like calling them those students because that's how our students have described my entire career. But you have those students here, oh, what are those students? Ones that don't want to learn, the ones that disrupt class, the ones that... And, uh, you know, so it's been really interesting for me to work with those kids, uh, and really try to help them figure out that education is important when they're in a, they're typically in a perpetual poverty situation, an education situation, where their families didn't graduate and, uh, don't know how to maneuver through school in the minutia like middle-class or middle-class people do. That's why when the district asks, did you hear anything about this initiative or these school closers? My families don't talk to me about that because that's not on their, that's not in their, on their plate. They're worried about feeding their kids, they're worried about all kinds of things besides what is happening in our community. And, uh, so we deal with perceptual issue. And it's amazing, I get a tweet from a parent the other day, and he says to me, hmm, I guess your kids need some manners over at Everett. I go, what are you talking about? One of our little girls fell in the street, and she turned her ankle, and someone in the community tweeted that all of my students just walked right past her. Well, I was there about a minute after this event happened, our students were helping her, and I tweeted back with this, because it was right in the corner of Thirty-Eighth and Coopling, and I go, so how many people are tweeting though at the number of cars that turned within three feet of this little girl and didn't even bother to stop? You know, so I've got a bit of a chip on my shoulder when it comes to the way people talk about my school. We work hard there, we have challenging issues, we have challenging families, but we do what we can to get them ready for high school. And, uh, so I want to talk about a little about that, about how do we create a partnership? Because we service the kids that live in this city. I get very few kids from Denver, and we get kids from Edgewater, and we get kids from other places as well. But, you know, how, how do we begin working with kids? Because no one's knocking on my door to say how they, how can they help those kids? You know, what can we do to improve your test scores? How can we partner with you? How can we mentor with your students to give them a fighting chance that in their families has not come? And the reason I say that is because I was one of those kids. I was a, grew, grew up in a single-parent family on food stamps without a father, he left when I was five, and I lived in the projects. And I tell my kids all the time, if I can do it, you can do it. But nobody is championing for them beyond what test scores say. So we've got a perception problem at Everett, and that's one of the things that I've been asking to talk to you guys for a long time about, so thank you.
Principal Gomez, uh, principal, if I may ask you a question. You mentioned the, the, um, I can't remember now, the, the affair you're gonna have, the affair you're gonna have, um...
The twenty-ninth?
Sorry, thank you, ressorts fair. Could you explain that a little bit more, so that people understand?
Sure. Uh, my social worker and a couple of people on the staff felt that it was important for us to bring community resources to our parents so that they could ask, access in our building. Again, one of the issues we face is our families don't know how to access resources, and if they do start accessing, it becomes cumbersome, they basically give up. So we invited, uh, food banks, we invited Jeffco Center for Mother Health, we invited a, a number of different organizations that support families and, uh, students. And, uh, so they're gonna come give out information, and if there's families that they can connect their services to, they'll do it that day. Uh, so about thirty, thirty-five.
I mean, it could have gone any direction, and I thought...
Yeah, so...
Our listeners might want to know what that was.
Sure.
Okay.
So, uh, Wheat Ridge High School, um, let me just say, I think Jeff did a pretty good job of framing a lot of the frustrations that we would have probably area-wide and with many of the, many of the different schools and the families and this, and the, the perception, you're right. Um, so, uh, you know, let me talk, I want to speak to, if you take a look at the handout that I gave you, I want to just, I'm not gonna run you through the whole thing, but turn to the second page, because we've talked a little bit about twenty-first century learning skills, our tw- Jeffco Twenty Twenty Vision, and we've been working on those, um, concepts for a long time. And a- as you heard earlier, we have a gifted program at Wheat Ridge, and that was really the beginning of the work where we said, we have a lot of kids that have a lot of different learning styles, a lot of different needs, and how do we address all the different types of kids? Um, several years ago, we began a project called Shades of Blue, which is an aviation exploration program, trying to engage different kids and give them opportunities in that. Again, with our, uh, with our twenty-first century learning, we're trying to expose kids to the world. At the high school level, one of the big differences is, um, between ninth and twelfth grade, we have four years to really get kids ready for the world. Uh, when they walk in the doors, they, they often come still pretty immature and a little rough around the edges with that middle school experience and a lot of growing up to do. And in four short years, we have to have them either ready for college or ready for a boss in the world. So, i- it was important for us to see how students interact, how they begin to look at the world differently when we bring, um, professionals into their world to talk about what their jobs are, how they learn, exciting new things that go on in the world. Three years ago, we began our STEM program, uh, and I thank some of you for being at the gala last weekend. Thanks for being out there, great time, I hope you enjoyed it. Um, but truly a program where, it's same kind of concepts, where we are bringing professionals into the students' world to teach them things that kids are not supposed to be learning. It's really adult-level learning. Uh, the car that they'll take to Detroit in a couple of weeks is an incredible design and manufacturing. Uh, the, the, the other part of it that is important that we start working on is real adult-world soft skills learning that they are not gonna get in a classroom with a book and a teacher lecturing. That STEM experience, not only do we have professionals who work with them, but we work on leadership, we learn, work on teamwork. We learn on, work on all the different soft skills that they're gonna be able to need, need to be successful as an adult. I had an opportunity over spring break to go with that team. They created a Mars Rover that went to Huntsville, Alabama, and competed in a competition at NASA. And to see the kids in action with their project, what they had created competing against college students and high school students, um, internationally, to see them interact with those other teams, the way they learn collaboratively with people they've never met before, is really was a treat. The other thing that was a real eye-opener for me was to see how many of those international schools are miles ahead, and how do we need to begin to look at education differently? So that we, we really do need to figure out how, if we want to be the world leader in a lot of areas, we need to start looking at how we are treating kids and how they're learning in a completely different way. Um, we saw a team from Germany who was called the National Space School or something like that, and they had pictures of six-year-olds working on a project of building things together when they're six years old. And at the competition was nineteen-year-olds that were now the final product of that space school. So how do we look at the world differently? We're saying twenty-first century learning, and we need to really start embracing that. Most of you are aware that our STEAM program created a structure last year over at Lutheran Hospital. Many of you were there for the unveiling, again, thank you for that. This year, they're working on a fog wall that will actually serve as a screen for projecting images at prom at our Fresh Twenty-three presentation at the end of the year, the art show that our students do. They'll have a fog wall that they will be showing movies and videos on. So a great learning for those kids as well. Again, same concepts of bringing the professionals into the students' world to make the learning really relevant and to go beyond book learning. We've also added a construction class. When we're talking about all kids, you heard some other principals describe what all kids can look like and how they look different. We need to understand that our job is no longer to say all kids need, you know, all kids means all kids go to college. That's not what the world needs, all kids need the opportunity to engage as successful citizens in our world. And you talked about test scores, it's not measured on test scores. Good citizenry and what we are as adults, in fact, we heard speakers at the beginning of the meeting, engaged in the public process. We need to have students who are engaged in the process as well. So, we're working with other students who are not, um, college-bound, and we're trying to keep, teach them the construction skills. Uh, by the end of the year, we'll have about fifteen students who are fully certified and employable will be walking onto job sites after graduation, um, in the construction field. Again, those students have been taught by industry professionals, my math teacher does not know how to swing a hammer, I promise you that. Two other projects that we've worked on this year, again, to engage in future type of learning. One is Career Wise, is a new nonprofit that started up in Colorado this past summer. Career Wise is trying to bring an apprenticeship model to Colorado schools where students have a three-year apprenticeship that they're involved with. They are, at the same time, they're getting their high school education in grades eleven, twelve, and thirteen, so it's the first year after graduation. Those students are also engaged in apprenticeship work with businesses. So, w- we're engaged with Career Wise to try and figure that out because we do believe it's more important that we're having students prepared for the world. This semester, we've began a new problem, uh, program called Career Explorer, where we took thirty kids. These are the kids that are, are most at-risk kids. These are students who are disengaged from school, some of them had already dropped out, some of them don't, they're non-attenders. That, I know that doesn't make sense to people who went to high school, there are non-attenders, kids that don't show up ever. Um, those students, these are students who have had drug issues, these are students that are behind uncredits. They are not going to graduate from high school. They deserve an opportunity to figure their life out. So what we did was we've, again, leaned on industry, um, and we picked, we looked at the, the Colorado Department of Labor Job Report, and we picked the three top industries that are looking for labors in Colorado in the metro area, which is construction, hospitality, and healthcare. Those industries cannot keep their industries going at the rate we're feeding them workers right now. We reached out to those industries and said, we're, we want to create a program where you can help us train these students who are without hope, they're without hope of graduation, they quit coming to school, really, they're without hope in life. Help us engage these kids so they can be successful adults. Um, of the twenty-eight kids that we identified, I'm happy to tell you, all twenty-eight of those kids now attend regularly. They are, the students in hospitality have completed their training. They had three certificates they were trained to achieve. Of the twelve students that were in that program, they earned thirty-five out of thirty-six possible certificates. We've got partners with, um, assisted living centers, and they are just chomping at the bit to get these students to intern with them with the hopes that they then can follow up with, um, careers. They're willing to help pay those students college, um, experiences or post-high school training if those students are employed at their place of business. Our, um, he- our healthcare, our, sorry, hospitality is done. We've already done that training, those students are starting their internships. Healthcare students will finish it at the end of this week, and we'll be placing them in internships. The construction students have eight weeks, uh, training, so their training doesn't end till early in May. I think my general message is, we need to start working together to identify opportunities that we can really promote with students, where we are engaging them beyond the classroom, we're engaging them beyond their teachers, love teachers, educators are the greatest people on earth. And half the students in the classroom, it's like Charlie Brown's teacher, wah, 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 wah. And those kids that are checked out on us, that are not engaged in school, we need to find alternative ways to engage them to create productive citizens in our future. There's a lot of options and alternatives that we need to look at. I gotta tell you, the Career Wise, the Career Explorer program I described to you, we just did it because we saw that it needs to happen. We gotta start figuring it out. Completely unfunded, it's gonna cost us about a hundred thousand dollars this semester for those thirty students. So, how do we fund those programs? How do we figure out who the partners are? How do we continue to grow programs like that into opportunities that provide, um, an endpoint that is hope for a student's future? So, that's kind of Wheat Ridge High School, thanks.
I think we'll have Ally go next and maybe address some other issues. Um, we did have two elementary...
We did have two elementary schools up for possible closure earlier this year. Stober Elementary was one, and Pennington was the other. And as you know, there was a lot of discussion about the budget earlier. And I think we'll have Ally speak to that, and then I'd like to open it up for questions, anything specifically you'd like to ask. We have principals, we have the school board, and we have administration here. And it's not every day that we get these people to come here, so please, ask questions and, you know, maybe we could address also the comments that were made at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, first of all, thank you for your reports, and thank you for the hard work you're doing in your schools. It's been a pleasure visiting your schools. There is great work happening in all of our Wheat Ridge schools. I'm really excited about the Stevens principal hire. I'm very excited about Manning as a part of Wheat Ridge Articulation Area. Sounds like we got a dynamite principal there. You guys did a great job as well. And Janice going to Wilmer Davis, excellent. We have some more strong leaders entering Articulation Area, and I look forward to, I'm not happy at all that you are retiring, but I look forward to, I know you're going to get a strong leader in that position as well. You know, you're so right about nobody's knocking on my door saying, "What can we do to help your student achievement?" Because you get what you get, and you deal with the kids that you get at the grade level that they're at. And we know that, and probably everybody sitting here knows that. And you do the best you can, whether your, the students in your classroom in your school come five grade levels behind, and some of them do, or whether they're on grade level. And I've visited every school in this Articulation Area at least once, and I am telling you, there is great work happening in each of them. And I'm so proud of the hard work you're doing. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. But really and truly, what a speaker said earlier, "Strong communities build strong schools, as well as strong schools build strong communities." And I do look forward to future opportunities where our communities on every level can be working together to strengthen the excellent opportunities in schools in the Wheat Ridge Articulation Area. And it's been a great, it's been great to be a part of the Education Alliance and to learn more about the Arctic area through your experiences, as I've only been in this position for about a year and a half, though I have lived in this Articulation Area for 10 years. So, anyway, about the school closures, is that what you wanted me to address? Okay, in January, as many of you know, our cabinet recommended schools for closure, and two of them were in the Wheat Ridge Articulation Area. They were Stober and Pennington. And that was January 26th, and on February 9th, we were to vote on them. And as I think you know, we voted no on both of them. And what's happening now, and is, is we are, the board has asked our district, our cabinet members, our facilities team, to build a task force to come up with consistent measures and a consistent rubric to guide us through the process. We would like a healthier process to guide us through school closures and consolidations. And they are getting that ready, because you need to build a process to build that process. Because it is a very, we need to figure out, and that needs to be, when they figure out the process, which I, they will be going to the communities and getting input, it's not just going to be the facilities team. And hopefully by December, we will have a healthy process with a healthy rubric with criteria, multiple criteria through multiple lenses to guide us through a consistent process, if we feel like that is the way we need to go. Do we need, there are several questions out there that we haven't discussed in great depth. Do we need to right-size our district? As, you know, our facilities team said to us at the board meeting at least two or three times, you know, Jeffco was built in the 40s, 50s, and back then, you, school buildings were maximum capacity of 275, 325, and everybody walked to school. It's a different, it's a different day, it's a different age. And what we are, what is being reported to us to, for a school to be sustainable, you need a population of about 350 to 400 for it to, for the funding to make itself sustainable. That is what we are being told. If you look at other districts that were built in the 90s or 2000s, there are rarely elementaries under 400. DPS is having the same, same discussions we are having. Districts all over the country are having the same discussions we are having. And that is why we have asked for a very healthy process to guide us through this. And, and part of that process is, in my opinion, that we have actually discussed at the board table, is, is what is right-sizing a district? What does that mean? And, but right now, the criteria, we're looking for a healthy criteria, we're looking for community input. And I think Mr. Elliott, our acting superintendent, is all over that and has begun conversations internally. And Karen, you probably know way more about this than I do, because this is what we guided and directed our school district to do on February 9th. And, so we're not a part of that yet, but getting updates as we go along. Do you want to speak more to that?
There's not a ton more to add, but I'll echo what you said, that that's absolutely the process. Right now, there is a process where they've put, they're looking for bids from a third party to come in and help navigate that task force process and really think about what makes sense when you're considering a closure or consolidation. What should the criteria be? What should the process be? And there are guiding beliefs that are beginning to emerge even in preliminary conversations, but truly, we've not gotten deep into the work yet. But guiding beliefs along the lines of, it should be in collaboration or in partnership with our community. It should be a transparent and open process. They're difficult decisions, I think everyone recognizes that, but we know that we've got a responsibility to make some very difficult decisions. We believe that's best done with multiple voices at the table. Other than that, I don't think I've got a ton more to add to it. We're pretty early in the process.
Did I, is what I said representing what you were doing?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, do we want to open it up to questions, or, okay?
I believe we had Monica first.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work, your information, your updates. I really appreciate it. What, the constant message seems to be, we need to create a partnership. We need mentoring, we need teamwork. So how, as elected officials, can we do that? How can we assist? How can we help? What would your suggestions be?
One of the things I've been asking for, for a while, is, I know, come see our school. Come really find out what is going on in our schools there. When you get those concerned citizens that, you know, are talking about Everett in a negative way, because they've seen one of our kids do something in, across Kipling or whatever, their kids, you know, at least if you have a starting place with what we're doing, you can answer those questions or respond to them in a way that I think gives them better information versus, I think, not being in our schools and continuing to hear a lot of these things and not really knowing, you know, how to respond in a way that I think is beneficial for our schools and our community. So that's one suggestion I would make. A couple of you have visited, I know George came by and did a little tour last year, and, but come find out what's going on in our schools, especially the schools that have that reputation. We've got about half of them that do, so come visit us and see the good work we're doing. That way, when you get calls or whatever, you can say, "Well, I've been there. Maybe you need to go there and find out what's going on," versus, I think, perpetuating this continual negativity about some of our schools that serve those kids.
Yeah, you know, and I would say, I think it starts with awareness, which is what Jeff's talking about. And then the second thing that I think we look at is what are our opportunities? For example, tonight, I made you aware of our Career Explorer program. And I would hope that people in the room say, "Oh, I've got connections," or, "Oh, that sounds like we can promote that, we can help Wheat Ridge High School to find partners in the healthcare field." Partners in training in construction or employment in construction. So I hope when that awareness comes, the opportunity, it's always, "What is our opportunity to move forward and help out?" Was how I would think in my head, I guess.
Because, and it's also just making us and our community aware of what is available, and how do we get that out there?
Well, and I think one of the keys is, how do we make sure that awareness exists? This is a great opportunity, 10 years, I haven't had this opportunity in 10 years. So how do we create the opportunity for awareness and then to follow through with, "Oh, Jeff needs that, we're going to promote the fair on the city website. That is an outstanding idea, let's make that happen." It's an opportunity that we need to follow up with.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on that? So in terms of visiting schools, absolutely. And visit them throughout the year. I would encourage going into classrooms to look at some of the instructional things happening. That's where some of the exciting work is. I'd encourage folks to attend even PTA or accountability meetings, staff meetings. I mean, the work is the work. And as Griff was saying, really having that awareness of what's happening, but also building that partnership and building connections with people who are doing the work in the schools. Help schools when they're thinking about, "Ooh, we need a partner for X, Y, or Z," and they already have a connection. I also am seeing school websites posting more and more information, not just, you know, around evening events, but pictures and videos and descriptions of things that are happening during the day in classrooms. And so that's a great way to kind of build your background knowledge about what's happening in our schools. But we absolutely welcome school visits.
This one, I promise. You know, and I guess I would ask you to think about who you do hear from in this community and who you don't. And I think there needs to be some opportunities for our families that don't necessarily know what to say or how to say it or where to say it. And I think come to our schools and have some nights in some of these schools where you're not hearing from these families, and find out what the strengths that they have as families. Find out what their obstacles are. Find out why. And I think we miss, I think it's easy to look at scores and behaviors and perceptions and rumors, but do we really know why our kids and our families are struggling the way they are in some of our schools? And at that point, I think that gives you a better way of, I think, seeing what the issue is. And I think as a city, how do we, you know, provide engagement? One of the things we do is we have clubs. So three or four nights a week, we have kids in our building until 4:00, 4:30, you know, doing something that's extra, like basketball. We open our gym every Friday till 4:30, 5 o'clock, and we have 25, 30 kids that would otherwise be someplace playing basketball. So, how do we really, I think, find ways to engage some of these kids that are going out in our community and maybe not making the best choices? So I think that'd be something to do, is come find our, come hear from our families, know our families, because you're not going to hear from them unless you do, so.
I would like to add to that, as a school district, I, what would be helpful as leaders of the Wheat Ridge community, and we're saying, we're saying this to all of our leaders of all of our communities, it would be helpful for you to understand, and school funding is complicated, and Colorado school funding on top of that is very, very complicated. It would be, I think it's very important for you to understand the complexities of Colorado school finance, because we have a couple of laws that are not playing nice together and are actually, in my opinion, underfunding public education, among other services that are vital to our communities. But my passion is public education, I am representing publication, so I, public education, so I'd like to speak to that. We are, though we are very happy that the negative factor, it looks like it is only going to go up 50 million this year. We'll find out, hopefully in the next week. We still aren't very excited, you know, that means $5 million less for Jeffco. And overall, that'll be about $80 million less of money for public education per year that Jeffco has to spend. It's, it's very important to understand this. We're not expecting, we're expecting the negative factor probably to raise next year as well. And it's, it's important to know that. Our, right now, in the state of Colorado, per people funding is about $2,700 less per student compared to the national average, which I believe you got that graph from Great Ed Colorado, which is a nonpartisan group. And it's just, it's very important to understand the complexities so you can speak to it. And we have all of these variables at all of our schools. And as a Board of Education, we are doing our best to follow our mission and our vision, which, you know, basically is to have our students leave college and career-ready. And we want to be innovative. And you are doing great things at Wheat Ridge High School without the extra money, and it costs extra money. And, and we want to be doing these things at all of our high schools. And, you know, a lot of people, it's so easy. It's so easy to create doubt about misuse of funds, it's so easy to create. But when you look at our funding formula and you compare it the last 20 years, you really see that we are funded less than when you went to middle school or high school in the 80s. And, and that's a problem. That's a problem for me as a leader and advocate of public education for Jefferson County Public Schools. And, and I think it's something that if all of our city leaders understood more, could help us advocate under the Golden Dome and advocate within our citizenship as well. Because I'll go back to what one of our public commenters said, "Strong schools build strong communities," and vice versa. And we are all in this together, and we all, no matter who is sitting in this room, have the same goals. We want our kids to be college and career-ready. And the way that's going to happen best is if we are all working together. And, so I really look forward to future opportunities to work with our city leaders, stakeholders at every level. We've got to engage in bridge-building and conversations that can move us forward. And to me, that's very exciting.
Ally, you, first of all, let me say that the Education Alliance, that was the first purpose of it when it was originally formed. And thank you, Janice, so much for carrying it forward. What I mean by that, the purpose of it was for our elected officials and our staff, our city staff, to understand the school system better and vice versa. And so I think this is the kind of meaning that's incredibly important for us to understand more. I didn't realize that the importance of consolidation, the first thought that goes through anyone's head is, you know, smaller classes versus bigger classes. And, but, so I've learned something quite a bit tonight. And I think that our council members need that opportunity as well to understand so that we can speak to our citizens and bring your information to meetings that we have or publications that we put out. And I also, I know I've got, Zach, you want to have something to say? As well as, there's a video, I understand, a four-minute video that understands, that explains financial matters more?
I don't know if we can take some more questions?
Yes, let's do that, but I just want everybody aware what our timeframe is.
Ally sent us a video, I think it's four minutes long? Is that what, four minutes long? So we'll take some more questions, then we'll show a video.
You had mentioned a little bit about a healthy process for the school closures and looking forward to revise that process. And I can't think of anybody more versed in the art of school closures than the citizens of Wheat Ridge, because we've gone through it so many different times. So, as you go through that, I'd just ask that you leave the city of Wheat Ridge out of any future school closings. And I just want to know whether or not Stober and Pennington are slated or will be considered in the near future for closure, because that does impact enrollment, that does impact the retention of teachers and whatnot. So, as it relates to the schools in Wheat Ridge, what assurances can you give us that our schools will not be closed? Because we've already had so many other schools close already. What, what is the limit or the, what other community in Jeffco has had more school closures than Wheat Ridge?
I do not know the answer to that. But I, I can tell you, I mean, the process, I just want you to know how a Board of Education works. The cabinet gives us these recommendations, it's not like we come up with them.
Sure.
So I, I, there is not a moratorium on closures of schools in Wheat Ridge right now. I would hesitate to do that, we are about to get a new superintendent. And we're, I have high hopes for this task force and to come up with a healthy process. And I have high hopes that community will be part of the discussions. And I am speaking outside of probably what I should be speaking right now, because we just provide direction. And she is the one, and her cabinet are the ones that are doing the work after we provide direction. And that is the direction we have provided.
In past school closures, though, it seemed as though the facilities group has been used as a scapegoat or the, the way that these committees have been devised in the past has been, yes, that these recommendations are made to you, but that they are done in such a way as that they don't match up. For instance, with respect to that facilities condition index, Wheat Ridge High School has the worst conditions of all high schools. But yet, we're not seeing any investment in Wheat Ridge High School being considered. And you have Drake, Dunston, Ken Carl, and Creighton, all receiving upwards of combined total for those four, twenty-five million. But Everett, which has a higher facility condition index of twenty-three point four and Stover of forty-eight point five, are not receiving those investments. And part of that investment tells the students and the community that we're here to stay. But if you don't invest in it, well, it might get sold, it might get closed, who knows what's going to happen? And, and what does it tell the students when they walk through the door? So that, to me, the money walks. And so that's what we need to see in Wheat Ridge, is investment in the community. And you talk about school financing being complex, communities are complex, but there was a, a pretty, I think, pretty decent way to resolve community issues. And that was boiled down to this broken window theory. And one of the schools that you've closed currently has thirteen boarded-up windows in our city. And to me, that is unacceptable. So Martinson Elementary currently has thirteen boarded-up windows. And to me, that is causing the dereliction of our community, at, at the cost of our community. And that needs to stop. And so my first request is to not close any other schools. And my second request is if you do close schools, that you maintain them at the highest level possible so that our police and our fire can make use of those schools, however they need to use them. I'm not opposed to how Martinson is being repurposed, I think that, that that purpose is useful. How can you, you know, object to a use like that? However, I do object to the condition of the school at present. And I would, would hope that we have some way to continue to see investment from Jeffco schools into Wheat Ridge.
I, I want you to know I hear you. And, and I, I think you're talking about two different things here. And so I would like you to help me out here if I'm, okay, so. High FCI, and that's what the bond was to cover that we proposed for last year, was, was a reno for Wheat Ridge and was a complete reno for Stover and, and several other schools. And, you know, and that, you know, we're moving forward, that didn't pass, I'm not whining. I'm, we're, I'm just trying to state some facts here. We, we did vote as a school board to make quite an investment in Wheat Ridge schools and have that on as part of the bond. Now, I, I am, I hear what you're saying about these four school additions. And I want you to know that that is, in my opinion, and, and if you disagree with me, please, please tell me, because I want to hear it and I want to think more if I'm not making sense here. But in my opinion, those, the two, the two additions that I am, that I, that we will be considering, I don't know if you looked at our agenda, but we will be considering two additions on Thursday. And we will be discussing a Drake addition and a Dunston addition. And those will be based on student seats in need and in those areas, because there is crazy overcrowding. We've got a couple of elementaries up there that are at about eight hundred. And so in my opinion, this is how I am feeling about that, and I'm not speaking for the board of education. I am understanding, I, that's how I understand those propositions from our facilities department. And right now, those make sense to me because of that. The outrageous growth in the Northwest Corridor and in the Solteria-Lakewood area. It's not that, I think those are two separate issues, taking care of deferred maintenance and trying to accommodate growth. And please, 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 please respond if you.
Well, I, I think that investment in the schools that have the highest facility condition, condition index would allow those facilities to continue to be used for the longest period possible and also shows the community that those schools are here to stay. And the, the concept that you have overcrowding in other schools is not any lesser of a concern. However, when you use these, the, the problem is you're using these facility condition indexes and, and other metrics. And you mentioned the, the rubrics for the closing of schools, but then you don't follow the, those same, it's like you're, you're using these metrics for specific purposes and then those, those go away for that purpose. So the, the facility condition index was used for the ballot measure, but then somehow it's not applicable now when you're spending money. So how is it that, it should be across the board that the, the school with the greatest need received, the, my understanding is Wheat Ridge High School is in one of the worst conditions in the district as it, as it relates to that condition index. So that would tell me that, that needs the greatest attention first. How is that not? If it's in the worst condition, wouldn't you fix that first?
That, the cost of that is so huge. So that is why we put it on the bond?
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to the, as opposed to working with the one-time monies to do that? Would you please add if I'm not?
Yeah, absolutely.
Speak for your cabinet better than I can.
Well, maybe. I'm processing through your questions and I think, as Ellie indicated, in my mind, I'm separating, you know, one really is around addressing overcrowding issues where we've got a serious problem in the north and the south. And so that's really around the number of seats. And how can we address that through some money going into the middle schools? When I put that over here and then instead I think about as a district, what are the needs throughout the district in terms of buildings that have deferred maintenance, you know, warm, safe, and dry? That to me is a whole district, almost quandary of how do you prioritize your money? And without going too deep into it, I'm wondering, and I'm going to look to Jen, and wonder if we want to bring a facilities group here to go deeper in that? Because I think Ellie and I can address it to a certain level, but you've got really great questions around maybe even how was the FCI number developed? Or how does that get applied across the district and why not Wheat Ridge? And they could speak to the needs across the district. I want to come back to one other thing before I forget. You had, I think, asked a little bit more about the, well, you said, please don't close schools in Wheat Ridge. And like Ellie, hear you loud and clear, I think some of the best language that I've heard that's really shaping our thinking moving forward is we've really had to set, push the reset button. We've had to say, okay, we know that a process moving forward needs to be reflective, needs to be in collaboration with our community. We've got to make good decisions with many voices at the table. And that's why I think it's best to think of it like you're, you're hitting the reset. So it's not like there's, I've had this question, well, what schools are still on the closure list? Well, none of them, there's, right now, there's not a closure list out there. We've backed up from that and said, whoa, we need to redesign this process so that it makes sense to everyone. And so we're taking all the different things into account. And we're really thoughtful about the criteria and the people helping us make that decision. So there's not a list, you know, we've got past, you know, board conversations we've had, past district conversations we've had, recommendations throughout the year, but there's not a list that sits on anyone's desk right now with, well, these, you know, five schools or twenty schools or ten schools are now slated for closure. No, we need to rethink this process first. Then we can begin to apply that to whichever schools.
I guess, and, and our problem is, is that we do have a list in, on my desk, and that's a list of schools in Wheat Ridge that have already been closed. And that's where we, we just can't take it anymore. And we, we don't want to see any further schools, schools close. So if there is a reset, I would ask that that reset include a Sunrise Review Committee to understand what the needs are of elementary schools in Wheat Ridge to consider, you know, what, what is the best and highest use of Jeffco school properties within Wheat Ridge to understand, making sure that your current configuration is proper and that we have the opportunity to consider Martinson or other schools for reopening potentially. If it is a reset, then make it a reset. That'd be my consideration. Thank you.
I had Mr. Fitzgerald earlier.
Okay, I'm, I'm acknowledging right up front the subjective nature of this question. And so I'm not asking for a scholarly response, because I, I don't think you have one. You lost this last election by between three and five points. And I'm just wondering if you have an idea why district lost?
Well, first of all, I can tell you, I think that we could have used a lot more time preparing for this. When, I know we have gone out and spoken to other districts who have spent a year or two to gear up for a mill and a bond, districts that are half our size and a tenth of our square mileage. And I think, I mean, I think there are multiple reasons. And I think that we could have, I think that I will take responsibility for, we could have had more clear messaging. I think it was easy to misconstrue, misconstrue some of our messaging and misunderstand some of it. And I think we needed to have more clear messaging on some levels. Other than that, I mean, and you can add whatever you would like. I, I think that we, we had a great pack, I really do believe in the package that we put forth. I believe it needed to be better defined. And I believe we needed more time. Our needs have not changed. We don't all of a sudden have less deferred maintenance, less crowding. Our teachers aren't all of a sudden competitive with other school districts. Our socio-emotional needs of our students haven't diminished. You know, I mean, we, we still are receiving about seventy-seven million dollars less a year from our state in our budget, you know? So, you know, our, our conditions haven't changed yet. And, and so we, we need to be, I hope we go for another mill and bond in the future. We will go about it more smartly. I'm not sure if I, you want, anyone, any of you guys can add to this, because we're all part of that team. I'd love to hear your perspective on what you think as to why it did not pass.
Larry, we have council member Larry Mathews would like to ask a question. You guys can be thinking about your answer.
I've got about three questions, and some of them are really easy and some might take a little more thought. But first question is on this one graph, we've got twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen percent mobility. What is the percent mobility? What is that addressing?
Sure, mobility rate is the percentage of students and truly families who are moving in and out of a particular school community. So we tend to see in our higher poverty communities, we'll have higher mobility, although it really just does depend and it changes over the years.
Okay. So what's the no dup, dup?
Oh, thank you. Duplicated and non-duplicated, when you're figuring mobility rate, it could have to do with a family that might have three kids and they might be counted three times in the mobility when truly it's one family. It could also have to do with, this is where I'm going to channel my instructional data services friends, where you've got double households and you've got potentially shared custody. And that sometimes muddies the water around duplicated or unduplicated mobility rates.
Let me go to another question first, because it may be easier a little bit. The last graph that you gave us, let me find it here real quick. It's the one with the green margin on the top. Says state PPF, I assume that's per pupil funding? Exactly what is the state? Per pupil funding? And it says underneath CDE pupil funding, twenty-fifteen, twenty-six, may just want to make sure I haven't just misread that. Well, is that PPF, per pupil funding? Am I reading that? Okay. I notice everything's within about four hundred dollars per pupil. I mean, Cherry Creek is, spends seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five, and Jeffco spends seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six. But if you take a look at all those school districts, the seven, nine, the school districts, it's all within a few hundred dollars per pupil.
Which column are you, okay, here we go, yes.
That's state funding.
That is the state funding, yes.
So that doesn't include local?
Yeah, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to drill down is that's strictly coming from the state's education budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there somewhere in here where we have this, the same thing, but total funding per pupil for these seven districts? It may not be in here.
Well, okay, so what this graph is, what this chart is, it's a chart of our, of the seven, our, seven surrounding districts, or largest school districts. And the per pupil funding they're receiving from the state. And the MLO per pupil funding is mill levy override per pupil funding. And that is on top of, per pupil, on top of what the state is giving them. Okay? And then bonds per pupil is the, is the column next. And, and so these.
But that's a debit, I mean, that's, that's a liability, isn't it, rather than an asset or however you put it in accounting terms?
It's more money.
Outstanding bond.
Yes.
So that's what you owe?
Correct.
Per student on previous bond issues.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
This does not include what you get from property tax, right, or from property tax? Isn't that right?
This, correct. The MLO is what we're getting and from, and, and so then, so then what this chartist was trying to show, what it was trying to show is the disparity in our different districts. And they went for, all of them, except for Douglas, went for a mill and/or bond this past session. And they, all of, Adams got it, their bond, Aurora got theirs, Boulder did, Cherry Creek did, and Denver did.
It remains, though, what I'm, what I'm seeing here, though, is the per pupil spending from these seven districts doesn't vary but a few hundred dollars per year per student.
But when you add the mill levy override money and the bond money on top of that, it is a lot more per pupil. And then you add how many?
So what you're going then is that outstanding bonds, and Cherry Creek's got nine thousand and we have five, a million probably. I'm not sure, five thou, I guess five thousand, we have five thousand.
Yeah, per kid.
I think one of the ways I've heard folks talk about the bonds per student is that's the money that has been devoted around facilities per student. So although you're right, it is, you know, it's, it's money that they're, that is outstanding.
But we don't know how much that is actually spent per year, that's what I'm trying to.
You multiply by their student count. Well, and that would have, that, you make a great point, it would be great to have a total, column total.
Yeah.
But yes, you can multiply each of these numbers.
But what I'm saying is you've got outstanding bonds per student and some of them may have an endpoint next year. And then it changes a bunch, some of them, some of them may have just started and have twenty years yet to go. You really don't know where we are in the bond cycle.
Sure.
I mean, maybe, I mean, I could see where all of a sudden if one's, we pay off one huge bond, that next year, our bond per student spending may go down if someone else has just started.
And.
So that's where I'm trying to find an average per year spending per pupil that's kind of leveled out all of the different ins and outs that are coming in.
We might be able to get that for you. I can ask Kathleen Eskelson, our chief finance officer, she likely has a chart that we could forward on for you to take a look at.
Because when I look at, when I look at like Cherry Creek, which is a highly rated school district, I believe, I mean, their state funding is within a couple hundred dollars or a hundred dollars. And the MLO per pupil is within about two hundred dollars. So that's three hundred bucks a year. You go to school for nine months, it's not that much that we're behind Cherry Creek on those two columns.
But when you multiply it per student, it, it's a lot.
Well, but still, per student, if we're. Well, but still, per student, if we're, if we're missing two hundred dollars a year, I mean, that's probably not going to mean the difference between graduating and not graduating or something. I mean, I, you know, every day he goes to school, he's missing, you know, we're, we're short fifty cents. The other one question I had that I really wanted to get to and I'll retire is what is, in your first graph earlier up, it shows that all of our schools are virtually under capacity right now here in Wheat Ridge. When you go to our, the general, our schools. We were just area schools at a glance and for instance, Color Strand's enrollment is two thirty-six, its capacity is two eighty-nine. And that's consistent. What's the district's policy right now on open enrollment across sub-districts? I mean, way back in the seventies, I was up north and crowded as all get out. And we begged, begged the schools to let us bring our kids down to Wilmore Davis. And at the time, they paid superintendents based on the population in their school districts, so guess what? They wouldn't let anybody out of their school district even though they were on split session year-round school.
Right, sure, so I can speak to choice enrollment, open enrollment. We absolutely have policies that guide, I'm just going to use choice enrollment for the sake of the terminology, and welcome students from other districts as well as even within our district. It's a policy that's governed by law and my principals may want to jump in at some point. Hopefully, we've done a great job really explaining how it works throughout the system. But each school at the beginning of the choice enrollment season identifies the number of seats they have. And the number of seats has to do with the building capacity, but also the number of teachers that they've got. And certainly, they can add more teachers as they get more kids. And so we would absolutely welcome kids from other districts should that be something that parents want to do. We, we follow the process in terms of utilizing priorities, in terms of utilizing a lottery system. But especially where you see schools where there is open enrollment and there are seats available, they are welcome to choice into those schools.
You know, I see someone picking up their kids every year, every day at our schools, even though they're under, but you see the, the parents lined out onto a Kipwing waiting to pick up their kids. You know, could we not bring one bus down from one of your crowded schools? Have a central little mobility point there where you didn't have to send a bus up there for five kids? But can we, I mean, could we not encourage or do you have a plan for trying to encourage? People say, hey, listen, your school's really crowded, your kid may have thirty students per teacher here. If you go down here to Pennington or Everett Middle School, they only have twenty-four kids per classroom. Or we, we have the extra space there. You know, if you just pick up your kid at this parking lot and take him down there, maybe they ride the bus home, my kids did, but-
Right.
Would, do you have anything to kind of try to encourage that and promote it?
Right, so we haven't had discussions around busing them from the north where it is very overcrowded to central. And I may be talking out of turn here, and Ally, please jump in if I'm missing anything. Right now, we really leave it up to parents to choice in if they want to. And we are trying to do a fantastic job of being thoughtful about communicating about all of our schools and where there are seats and great things happening at our schools. I don't, I could be wrong, I don't know that our parents in the northernmost community would be okay with their kids on a bus for however long it would take. You know, it's certainly something we could ask. I just, I don't know if they would do it. I've got my mom hat on saying, I want my-
I was saying a school by my front door every day, picking up kids on the side of the street.
Yep.
And it just seems like you have an asset here in Wheat Ridge of underpopulated schools. And you've got a debit, if you will, up there of crowded schools where you're moving in temporary classrooms or doing something. And whatever you could do to promote that migration, that way you wouldn't have to close, open, close, open, and populate, underpopulate, you could level out your expenditures. I guess Zurgers closed right now. We had a guy come by last year. So I don't know what schools up there are so overpopulated, but Zurgers certainly up north. And maybe you had to, you know, bring some kids in there and then you wouldn't have to close a school.
Right, I hear you. I think what we, what we hear from our communities and our families and our moms and our dads and grandparents over and over again is we, we want it here. We want, we want either within walking distance or we want a short bus ride because we moved here for this particular school. We moved here because we love what's available, but we want you to figure this out, so.
They've never suffered through year-round, split-session schools.
Yep.
We begged them to let us bring our kids down to Wilmore Davis. And finally, about three years later, they let us.
So I, I know this is getting late and I know we have other guest speakers, so I want to be quick. I just have a couple comments and a couple comments and a request or I'm, I'm reaching out, so let me know. So it was good to hear some of the perspectives of what Jefferson County's doing and with the schools. And it's not necessarily that you're looking to close, but schools are becoming larger. And, I mean, you can see that in other districts. I mean, go to Cherry Creek High School, holy cow, you know. I mean, look at some of these newer high schools and, you know, they're big. And I think it kind of also goes back to Cherry Creek and, you know, perhaps they have fewer schools to maintain because they've built them bigger as they, because they built them later than we did in Wheat Ridge. Because I know how old Wilmore Davis is, so. And there's a lot of smaller little pocket schools, like you were saying, the kind of the neighborhood school versus how they're doing things now. So a lot of it makes sense when it comes to infrastructure and those types of things. I want to go back to kind of more of what we can do. And I know Griff and I know Jeff, and I worked with Jeff a little bit when I was on PTA. I don't have kids, but I was a community member on PTA and did some fundraising. And I think there are a lot of us out in the community that don't have kids that are happy to help. I, I know that there, I mean, I can think of newly retired folks, just even in my neighborhood, up the street from Wilmore Davis, that would be happy to go and, and help with reading programs or engage with students. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that even as a council, we could, you know, help work on building some programs there to engage the kids. And then, so, call me. And I think the other thing with that is, do your PTA presidents get together? Because that's the other thing. I'm also really aware of like Prospect Valley and some of the work they've done. Because I, I know folks that have kids at Prospect Valley. And, you know, do they get together with some of the PTA presidents of Wilmore Davis and, you know, kind of brainstorm of what works and what doesn't work? So that was just another thought. I don't know that there has to be answers to all these. The other thing, program that I was involved in with the Denver Public Schools, because at the time, my work was Denver, was with the Mile High United Way and the Reading Buddies. I'm wondering if Jefferson County could reach out to the Mile High, the Jefferson County United Way? Because I know that one of the big things we did there was we kind of picked higher-risk schools. And it was the third grade, like Reading Buddies. That was a lot of fun. And you learn from those, you know, and then you learn from you all that at the third grade, kids are learning to read. And if they don't learn to read, then from that step on, you know, they read to learn. So if we don't get them at third grade to read, then from there on, and I think John kind of referred to it, it throws things off. So I'm just wondering if, you know, even, heck, I'll even try and start a pilot program with one of the schools and, and get some folks there to have Reading Buddies. I mean, I just think that, you know, maybe it's more about the engagement and kind of the community. And I think that there'd be a lot of people in our community that would support these types of programs. So I, I want to thank everybody for what they do. And I'm, I know as, I don't know because I'm, I don't have students, but I know as a participant in, in some of the schools that it's tough out there. So whatever we can do to help, please let me know and let us know. That Reading Buddies is really cool, if you've never, if you've not heard of the Denver United Way one. It's really cool.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments. And, you know, and one thing we also, what I could have said also about three A and three B is seventy percent of Jeffco have no connections to the schools. They have no kids in the schools, seventy percent of our residents, of our voters. And I would love to get together with some retired people in Wheat Ridge so they can understand our, our great public school system. Jeffco is a really, it is a great public school system. It is not perfect. We can always be doing better, always. So I'm not saying we are not without words. But the more we get community aware and community engaged, the better we all are. And the better our students are because they are our future council, counselors, leaders, business owners, and residents. And we want to keep them in Wheat Ridge and in Jeffco. So I would, I would really, I'm going to reach out to you. And I would love to get together with a group of retirees or anyone who wants to talk Jeffco, anyone. Because that's my job, part of my job. I want to spread the news and the challenges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you, everybody, for coming in. I know it's getting late. I have three questions. And my first one is to the principals. Do you, is there any pathway that you guys have to be able to kind of like meet with each other and then kind of like meet down like the high school to the middle school, the middle school to the elementarys to say, hey, this is, you know, when they're getting into middle school, these are the trends that we're seeing. And, you know, I, maybe there's some way that we can start to address these trends. You know, before they get all the way then into high school and, and the trends not necessarily being captured prior to that and addressed? Is there anything that you guys have gone on for that?
Yeah, you know, I think there absolutely are, and I can speak more with Jeff because we work a little bit more closely on that. Our transitions are things we've worked on the last couple of years and we're still working to clean up. But absolutely, that's a part of the conversation is tell us about the kids as a whole. And then let's look at kids in particular that might need some reading mediation or something like that. So we, we have some of that. We've worked at it and I think we continue to work at the transitions and to have better communications and handoffs between kids.
I'll add to, we meet, is it monthly or every six weeks as an articulation area at different schools? And what's been really exciting for me, being new to the Wheat Ridge Artic, because most of the schools I've worked in have been Golden Artic area schools, is having the chance to observe in other classrooms and, you know, going to Wheat Ridge High School and going to Everett and getting to be in the classrooms and kind of seeing the work going on there. And I think that, you know, then I can go back to my staff and really talk about sort of the programming happening at Everett, happening at Wheat Ridge, and sort of back mapping, right? So if we know this is sort of our end outcome, what are we doing starting the first day of kindergarten to prepare them for that? And I think our, our monthly meetings have been really helpful for me this year, especially being new to the Artic. But I think we are starting that work, so.
And the other thing we did along those lines this year that's unique to the Wheat Ridge area is we hired a social-emotional leader for our area. Jeff outlined earlier, a lot of the problems our kids may come into, probably more frequent, higher numbers of kids with different social-emotional problems than we've had in past years. So we have one person that we hired who was coordinating that K-12 through our area, working with all of our counselors, all of our social workers, all of our mental health providers. So that's the other piece that we're kind of trying to do, that it was kind of an experiment that we set out last summer and we, we said we thought we needed. And I think that's helped address a lot of those issues as well.
We also, I think, face some of the same issues you all face where our demographics are so widespread. We're probably one of the most diverse articulation areas in Jeffco where we have schools like Maple Grove with, you know, single-digit free reduced lunch and economics situations with their families that are much higher than schools like Color Strand or Pennington or other schools. I think from a middle school perspective, you know, we, we don't get about forty, we, we do not have forty percent of our students, approximately thirty-five, forty, that should come to us that don't. And a lot of the reason is because of perceptual issues or those demographic issues or those test scores. So I think for us, it's difficult to articulate with all of our elementary schools when we're not either getting those students or their economic situation, family situation is contrary to the majority of students that we have. Now, thirty-two, thirty-three percent of our students do not qualify for free reduced lunch at our school. And they do have some very stable, educated families who bring their kids to Everett because they want that diversity and that, you know, exposure, that do go to the high school and compete with Manning students and other students that they get. So, you know, we've got a lot of good things going, but we've got to keep our kids in Wheat Ridge schools, which I think is what prompted the Wheat Ridge Alliance because, again, great schools, great communities. And we need to articulate more as a school system within our Artic area to really figure out what our schools need to look like while we're competing for students, you know, with other schools because of choice enrollment, so.
Oh, sorry, I had to, go ahead, George. No, and so, and so, thanks, thank you, you guys, I appreciate that. And my next one is for Genevieve, is working on the Education Alliance. I know that you guys had put together a book that had descriptions of all of the Wheat Ridge schools. And I'm just wondering if at some point that will get updated? And if while doing that, is there something where you can put in some sort of like PTA, like volun-, you know, like-
Opportunities?
You know, volunteer opportunities for each school so that even if parents necessarily don't get those schools? And, and I, I have two students in Wheat Ridge High School and two in Prospect Valley, so I have a lot of kids in schools right now. So I'm just wondering if, if that'll be a part of like the updates that'll come to the Education Alliance?
Yes, we produced this one two years ago, three years ago, actually. And we do have funding to produce it again. And we were actually waiting at the beginning of the year to see what would happen with the budget. And it does need to be updated. So adding resources is a great idea. The other thing we want to add is a more updated list of preschools because we've heard from families that they feel there's a shortage of preschools in the Wheat Ridge area. So direct them to the preschools. But yes, we do have plans to update this and I hope it would maybe happen in the next three to four months.
Thank you. And then my last, my last question comment is to Ally. When you had spoke about you guys are going to come up with some third party that's going to come up with the rubics of, you know, how to close schools and how to go through that process and kind of along the lines of what Councilor Urban said. I, I would hope that in that process, you, a consideration of who qualifies and doesn't qualify for that would be how many schools have they already lost in their community and how, how long has it been since they've lost those schools? As, to possibly consider that as, you know, one of the things that you're looking at to close a school. And then my next question is, a lot of our Wheat Ridge schools, we're, you know, going to get quite a bit of advancement with that bond, but without the bond passing, where have they gone? Obviously, they were important enough to put on the bond, but so now where have they been relisted in priority list?
Can you repeat that last question?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, so obviously, the, the Wheat Ridge schools were pretty high priority because they were a part of the bond. But when the bond didn't pass, then where did they get put on that list? But, I mean, did they get dropped to the bottom? Did they get moved to the middle? Kind of like, you know, we were going to spend all this money if we got it through the bond. We didn't get that money. Where did our schools go to in priorities?
That is a, that is a great question and that is a question that Facilities Department can answer. So I'm going to throw something out there that I want you to think about and that I would like to talk with you in about a month about, or maybe two weeks. One thing I didn't talk about that I usually, that usually is part of my diatribe, if you went to any of the closure meetings that I was at, you heard me say this. Economy's a scale, all right? Economy's a scale. It is costing more and more every year to operate a school from any factor, you know, to operate any business, all right? To operate your home. If you've done any home repairs, if you've owned a home for more than ten years, it costs more now to do a renovation than it did ten years ago. And, and that's just not going to change. And so I'm just, the numbers that I was given, and this, this is for you to put things in perspective because here I am and I want, I want community-driven processes. process. I think our board does as well, and that's what, that, that's why they're reworking the process. Here are the stats that we were given. And the stats we were given, for every school under three hundred and fifty, it costs a hundred dollars per student to make ends meet in that school. For schools under two fifty, it's like seven hundred dollars per student to make ends meet in that school. So we've got schools, you know, we, we have a problem. We, and it might be considered an opportunity. It depends on how you want to look at this. I spent twenty-six years in a school up north, district up north. They have thirty-five elementaries. I looked up every single elementary. None of them have under four hundred students in them, not a single one of them. And, you know, just because I was trying to do my research on economies of scale. And so we have a quandary. As school funding in Colorado keeps going down, inflation keeps going up, operating costs keep going up, we, you know, we want to spend our money on innovation. We want to spend monies on deferred maintenance. We have a billion dollars' worth of deferred maintenance in our one hundred and fifty-three facilities in JFCO. JFCO, by the way, is the size of Rhode Island. And, which is another reason why it's hard to get out to all of the voters. But, but I just want to put that in perspective. And I honestly am saying that because I want to have further conversations with you about what you think about consolidations, closures, how do we work through difficult times when we know that, you know what, our property valuations next year are probably going to go down again? And guess what that means? That means our property taxes are going to go down again, because you know the Gallagher Amendment dictates that we have to have, you know, this much from commercial, fifty-five, forty-five. And so it's almost like a noose that keeps tightening around our necks for school funding. We're gonna, you, our taxes are going to go down again. Our property taxes are probably going to go down again next year. And because of that formula. And so it, it takes all of us to understand this, so you know that this isn't mismanagement of funds. This is, we are actually receiving less money. And it is actually costing more money to run and operate. And so we have a lot of factors to consider. And, and I think it's best that we all do that together with the same understanding about what, of all the facts surrounding what it takes to operate a school. And I really believe that a further study session with the Wheat Ridge City Council is in order. We've had one with a few other city councils in the past year. And, because it's important to know, and it's important to problem solve together. And because JFCO is a great school district doing great things, we want to continue our traditions of excellence. I can rail off fifteen successes just in the past year. It's not, I'm not trying to set a doom and gloom story. We have been doing more with less since the negative factor started in two thousand nine, since it was invented. And, and I, so I just, I want to, I want you to have that perspective. And I would love more collaboration on what your thoughts are. I love solutions-oriented discussions, because none of the decisions our board has had to make the past year are easy. And I, I don't, I don't see them getting any easier. But I do see them getting with rich conversation, rich dialogue, rich debate, respectful debate. I see more collaborative decisions, meaning nothing but good and better things for our school district and for our students.
Counsel, we've been on this discussion for quite a while, and we've learned a lot. Do I have some more questions that, oh, I never, Mr. Pond never did get to speak. Go ahead.
That's right. I thought you were going to shut me out.
I was trying to, but by God, you're too good for me.
Too bad. I will be brief. Thank everyone, including the public comment on this, on this item. And everyone coming, thank you so much. It's been, there's a ton, obviously, to learn. And I suppose it is obvious to state that this is a very dynamic and complex, you know, situation. People's lives, our community, growth, deferred maintenance, everything. I, the only thing I probably could add to all the other things that have already been asked and answered is that I, I certainly want to talk more about the facility side of things as, as, as we move forward. And I know that it's come, it's been woven into our conversation tonight for sure. But perhaps moving forward, and I absolutely agree that it would be great to invite you guys down here and have some more conversation. And as we understand this a little bit more, and as, as you, I hope, will, will all be strategizing as to how to not only look at the criteria of how you handle your assets and, and the operation, but also the strategies of how to be successful moving forward with some of these critical needs, which obviously are both capital and, and in some cases, the mill levy. I hope we can, 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 can help. It's a very sobering page to look at all the green passes and the one red failed on this page. And I think that it would be really important for us. I, I know I am interested, and I hope others are interested in, in having that dialogue as to how we can help strategize, communicate, communicate to our constituents and, and really help, help you and help us get, get the things that we need for this district. So thanks again for coming.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, you, this may not be an easy question that you can even answer right now. But I'm curious about the relationship between JFCO and the charter schools. And I bring this up because I've got Phoenix Mountain School in my district, and they're bursting at the seams. And every kid is bussed in or carred in because I spent three meetings during the summer with Patrick and the Police Department and our Public Works, trying to figure out traffic patterns so people could just get their kids dropped off at school. What's the relationship there? And, you know, there's, I can't remember now, at least three hundred kids over there that could fill a couple elementary schools. What's, how does that fit into the mix?
You know, a while back, and I don't, I wasn't here a while back, I wasn't engaged anyway, a while back, I think there was a contentious relationship between, between the district and some charters. We are trying to build those bridges. I've got a, I, I mean, there are a lot of charters in my articulation area. I think I oversee eight. And I've visited them each at least once. And, and that, you know, they, they, they fill a need. I, I, Mountain Phoenix, I've just, I think they're doing great work there. And I think it's unders, important to understand their pedagogy, because there is, there is a curve where, you know, they start, you know, that, they don't, it's a different pedagogy than your traditional school system. And, and same with Compass, same, same with Compass. And, and, and you know, you've got your Montessori curve, you've got your Waldorf curve. And it's important for us as leaders in the school district, and leaders in the community, and a school board, to understand the different pedagogies of each charter that we have. I went to a, I feel like I have very good relationships with the charters that I oversee. And I think we're all trying to build those bridges. And we're starting to go to the charter consortium meetings, which happen every other month. And, you know, Mountain Phoenix was very supportive of our mill and bond. And, you know, one of their board members worked pretty actively with us to try to figure out what they could do to get the word out. And several of their parents did too, as well. We're constantly trying to figure out how, how they can support. So, is it perfect? No. But I think we're, I think both sides are really working, building trust. And I think the trust is there now. I feel like it is, anyway. And, and I, I, geez, they, I believe our charters, I really do believe our charters complement our system and make JFCO what, what JFCO is. You know, we have so many different options and opportunities. And I respect what they're doing.
Can I add on to that?
Thank you.
I think one of the opportunities even for our neighborhood schools, and from a systems perspective, is to see, well, where are our parents voting with their feet? So if we've got, you know, large enrollment at one or more charters in our area, what's the need that they're meeting that we're not meeting? And can we take a step back from that and say, oh, my goodness, should we be considering something in our schools, a different pathway, or a different instructional strategy? Absolutely acknowledging that parents and kids should always have choices. And I think that has changed. I've been in JFCO for over twenty years. And I'll echo what Allie said, that in the past, it was contentious, not a lot of understanding between neighborhood and charters. Charters initially were developed to be learning organizations for the neighborhood schools, not just here in Colorado. We've not in the past done a good job of that. Yet, on a visit to Compass Montessori, and speaking with some of the leaders there, learned that we share some of the same challenges, as well as they're doing some great work around deep learning experiences for kids. They're very interested how we in the neighborhood schools are using data to progress monitor, and how could we partner to learn from one another. But then I'll go back to the systems perspective. We really need to take a look at where those waitlists are. And if we don't have those waitlists, again, what are we missing? And what should we be looking at for programming in our schools?
As I listen, I, I would like to hear Counsel's thought about this, but I think it's been a very valuable meeting for us, for us. We all learned quite a bit from it. I think possibly we need to remeet again quarterly at, you know, at least, so that we have a little better of blending together of a very, very important part of our community. You like that? Oh, you wanted to space something? Go ahead.
Given that we've discussed quite a bit about our neighborhood schools here at this meeting, potentially at that next opportunity, I'd love to hear a little bit more about the transition that Sebeski Academy's had coming into Wheat Ridge, and what that's looked like, and, and how that is moving forward. Because we really just, we haven't spent any time here tonight talking about Sebeski. So I just want to put that on the dock.
Sebeski, good point, very good point. Anyone else? Genevieve, can you kind of arrange that so that we can?
Yes, I can.
Once again, all sit at the same table?
And thank you to everyone who came tonight. We appreciate your time. And
Thank you very, very much.
We would love to invite you back in maybe the next quarter. Thank you.
Can I make one quick suggestion on that next study session? Could we potentially have that at one of the neighborhood schools, so that the schools and the parents could participate in that or see that? Potentially have an off-site study session over?
I think the only problem is broadcasting it to our citizens.
We do Facebook Live.
But...
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to forego broadcasting for that meeting. That's up to you guys.
Have to go?
Forego broadcasting for the meeting.
Oh, I thought you said rock throwing or something.
Broadcasting.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Really, really appreciated it.
Quick break.
Want a break?
Quick break for everybody.
That's what I thought. I thought that's what you wanted. That's what I thought. I thought that's what you wanted.
Restroom. James in the restroom.
James in the restroom. No resting.
Want me to do, I can do, I can do introductions first while we're waiting for. Okay, don't you guys love your job? Now we're going to talk about a train. Train station. Um, well, thank you for that, your patience and, and just, uh, I'll do quick introductions. Uh, we are going to give you an update on our Ward, Wheat Ridge Ward Station and our vision that we put together. Um, we, we've come to a point where it's in final form and, and just want to get that in front of you one last time before we take it out on the road and, um, talk to property owners and, and developers and, and such. So we have, um, with us tonight, um, WSP Parsons Brinkerhoff, which is going to change May 1st to WSP, right? Um, Mike Unger and Will Wagenlander. Wagenlander, we've been working with them for, um, the last, I don't know, several months, um, and they've been great to work with. And they, um, they're very, they're as excited as we are about this project, I believe. And, and so, um, can, should we, you just want to turn it over? Or do you want to start? You got an update first?
Yeah, just real quickly, and I'll turn it over to, to Will or, or Mike to do their presentation. They've got a PowerPoint that just will run through some, some of the substance of the vision. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're set. We have WSP and Parsons Brinkerhoff here this evening to give us an update on our Wheat Ridge Ward, uh, station. Ken?
So we've been, uh, we've been doing various planning and visioning around our future, one and only, uh, Wheat Ridge Ward Station at the end of the line, or as Steve likes to say, the beginning of the line, uh, on the G-line. Um, so, uh, we've been working on it really since 2006, when we first adopted a suburbia plan and have done various things, which are all mentioned in your staff report. So I won't go over those, uh, for the interest of time. Uh, but most recently, um, particularly with the approval or the potential for the approval of the 2E, uh, bond question with funding for this project with $12 million in infrastructure, it became really clear to us that it was important to, uh, just better define what our vision was in a little bit more of a specific way. Uh, so that became even more, uh, important when the voters in November did approve, uh, the 2E measure. Uh, and we have $12 million in funding for a variety of different types of infrastructure that might, um, be invested in this area to facilitate economic development and revitalization of the area. Uh, so it was, uh, July of last year that we, uh, went under contract with WSP. And it was actually strategic timing because we, uh, were targeting, uh, reaching out to the development community in November. Uh, ULI hosted a TOD kind of real estate forum, which really put, uh, stations and developers and property owners and, uh, various parties, uh, in touch in terms of, you know, creating partnerships to, uh, facilitate, uh, the best that we can do as a region, really, in terms of, uh, developing good, solid, uh, transitory developments surrounding our, our 76 or whatever, uh, stations it is on the Fast Track system and build-out. Um, the, the work that WSP, uh, was doing for us was also designed to really, uh, leverage and, and continue the work that the ULI Technical Advisory Panel did. Uh, we had a, a technical advisory panel back in April of 2015. Uh, their report was finalized later, uh, that year as well. Uh, and we really are trying to build off of that vision, uh, so that we have a vision that we can really market out to developers, property owners, and other end users. Um, so I'll let, I'll, I'll turn it over to Will, uh, to do the update. And then I've got a few, after he's done kind of going over the vision document, uh, I'd like to give counsel an update on, on what we've been doing at staff level to kind of move forward, uh, the work, uh, that will be facilitated by the $12 million in 2E funds.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, council member, thanks for having me tonight. And Mike? Oh, is that better? All right. Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna run through a PowerPoint, kind of bring you guys up to speed as to where we are. Uh, a lot is same, uh, the same as the last presentation I gave, but, uh, there's some nuggets on the end and kind of shows, uh, the progress and what we heard from the development community and their reaction to the overall vision. So the vision objective was to present a contextual and focused TOD framework that communicates what the city wants to the development community and stakeholders, um, in order to get what you want at the station. And, and that's something that, uh, the ULI TAP, uh, mentioned to the city, really having a cohesive vision that, that can be built upon. So that was our objective. Uh, and how did we do that? So an important aspect of this was building on the past studies and efforts the city has undertaken that Ken spoke to earlier. Uh, again, building on the ULI TAP. And then, uh, what we did is the conversations with developers, key stakeholders, and community, uh, leaders. Uh, we had, um, confidential conversations with a number of, of TOD developers from the region. Uh, I believe we also spoke to some of you. And then we also spoke, uh, to key jurisdictional stakeholders, such as RTD, uh, and, and, and other organizations like that, which ultimately led to a vision that presents, um, the incorporation of stakeholder feedback, but is built upon, um, the work that's already been done. Uh, so again, the study area, I think we're all familiar with it. It's right there. Uh, the red is the station area. RTD has built that out. The parking spaces are in, as well as the bus slips. Um, now we just await, uh, for the federal government to say go. Uh, the site, again, you can see the layout there in, in the center of the, the two concentric circles. One is a five-minute walk, one is a 10-minute walk. It's a traditional way of organizing TOD. Uh, and though, that's a list of, of the very important, uh, past efforts that we built upon. Obviously, the TAP, but you can see there's a multitude of different projects that were incorporated into our process. Uh, and again, an important component of our effort was stakeholder feedback. And one of the categories that we broke down this feedback into was market readiness and timing. Uh, again, what we heard from the development community is that traditional TOD, the, the six stories of residential and office above, uh, commercial and retail, is a longer lead time for this particular station. Um, we have 74, 75 other stations in the metro area that you're competing against for development potential. Um, and what we heard from stakeholders is really to leverage what makes Wheat Ridge unique and to leverage the opportunities of the station, um, instead of just going for the, kind of the traditional TOD. Uh, from a site-specific perspective, um, a number of the people we interviewed, uh, commented that the site's not very visible from I-70, which is very important for development. Um, we need to, to leverage existing land uses and building types. I think you all know, uh, better than me, that there's quite a bit of employment up there, so really capitalizing on that opportunity that's already in the station area. And then I-70 is an opportunity. Uh, obviously, it connects the station really well to the larger metropolitan region, uh, but at a, at a city level, it presents a barrier from citizens to access the station area. So there's some opportunities and constraints presented by I-70. Again, thinking outside of the box when it comes to land use, uh, what the ULI TAP, uh, told the city is, think green recreational employment. Um, again, not the traditional TOD. And then to think of dense residential for Wheat Ridge. Um, it's not necessarily the 10 stories of multifamily, but it, could it be townhomes, three, four stories of multifamily condos along those lines? And then again, the target audience and activities. Um, let's try to attract new demographics to the city. What we, can we do to activate the area to make that, uh, uh, an attraction? Um, how do we activate the site prior to the development with events? Is there pop-up events we can, um, put together or you can put together to, to create interest and buzz around the station area? And then obviously, again, exists, engage existing and potential employers, um, in the station area and then attract employers who might, uh, find the location advantageous for what they do. Um, Ken spoke to this earlier. It's a ULT, ULI TOD marketplace. It's a still shot of a 360 VR experience that we put together, um, that really talks about what you would see at the station area. Now, this would be, uh, in place, uh, instead of what's there now. But what we really heard from the ULI TOD marketplace, uh, was that a lot of people didn't know that the station existed. Um, they were intrigued with the idea, um, but the idea never, um, I don't think we heard anything negative. I think there was a lot of intrigue, um, and, um, not a lot of skepticism, but something unique to the, to the metro area. And then, um, obviously, coming out of the, the last meeting, Base Camp, Wheat Ridge's vision, um, is the premier location in the metro area for outdoor recreation-focused companies, employers, uh, interested in outdoor recreation, maker spaces, and coworking spaces within the station area. Uh, and one thing we talked about last time was coworking spaces. Um, and a, a thing that we've added since then is maker space, which really, um, leverages the building type that's out there, which tends to be light industrial spaces for people looking to develop products. Um, it provides a little more leeway and creativity, whereas coworking is focused more on offices. Um, maker spaces for making things, um, so almost an incubator for products. Uh, and Base Camp got play in the Denver Post, so, um, sounds like the name has stuck. Uh, so what are the high-level vision elements? Uh, obviously, maker spaces, coworking, that's something we talked about last time. Again, pop-up events. What can we do to activate the large concrete apron that is the RTD station in the short term to create buzz? Uh, active public spaces, and then outdoor recreation. There's some unique elements to the site that could be leveraged for outdoor recreation. I'm going to dive into a little more detail in regards to those elements. So in terms of outdoor recreation, uh, the framework or vision suggests a regional park that has hike, bike trails, really takes advantage of the water there. We know water is a precious, uh, resource here in Colorado. Um, so really trying to turn that into a community amenity. And then, um, the possibility for public-private development opportunities on that site as well. Uh, multimodal connectivity, um, again, how do we connect the site, not just via car, obviously transit, but also walking and biking? Active transportation will be really important, um, to position it as, as kind of a, um, the outdoor center of employment in the metro area. Um, so in lieu of activated ground floor uses like retail and commercial, um, multimodal connectivity can serve to activate the streets and create buzz around the station area. Uh, and we are about to embark on a conceptual, uh, pedestrian bridge study. I think a lot of people are aware of the Lo-Hi Bridge across I-25. Um, but what the pedestrian bridge does for, for Ward, uh, Station is connecting the two sides. I mean, the, the rail's an opportunity. It comes to the city, but it's also a major barrier. You're gonna have to access the site either on, um, Tabor or Ward. There's no direct site, uh, way across right now. Uh, so that's one thing we're gonna look at is, how can a pedestrian bridge help connect the site? And then also activate development in the station area. Vision elements, uh, the linear green space. This is envisioned as kind of a spine that moves through the site. A lot of the uses could be focused on it. And it, and it's more than just a, kind of a sterile street, but it would have walking and bike paths, excuse me, outdoor exercise nodes, small pocket parks, playgrounds, uh, really a place for community interaction and a place not from just moving, but also a place to, to be and, and enjoy. Um, so not, not just a transportation element, but a, a piece of, of community. And I believe I showed this last time, but this is just a, a simple 3D model of what it could look like with the coworking slash, um, maker spaces fronting onto it, and then various modes of active transportation, bike, walk, run, and vehicles located along it. And, uh, as we went through the vision, um, what came next are the specific infrastructure projects that would help to achieve that vision. Uh, so obviously, the, the development of a regional park at the southern end that takes advantage of the water, the linear green space, uh, street improvements, uh, traffic signalation, signalization in the gateway. Just spoke about the pedestrian bridge and the station plaza. Uh, utility construction and structured parking. Uh, parking is always going to be an issue with TOD. Um, and it's good to think about it early rather than later so that you're ready for it down the road when development happens. Funding and financing, uh, there's a number of existing funding mechanisms that already exist. Obviously, the $12 million sales tax. Um, the Ward Road TOD Metropolitan District is in place and tax increment financing in the future. Uh, I believe the city is looking to expand the Metro District, uh, Metropolitan District, uh, grant opportunities perhaps through the state or various other funding resources. And then the potential for development impact fees once development starts to occur. Uh, next steps, um, again, these are broken out into, I believe, three areas. The first one is collaboration and consensus building. These are a number of key people that the city has in the past and intends to coordinate with in the future to, to achieve the vision. And again, a lot of these things have been ongoing throughout the visioning process, so that collaboration is already happening. Uh, planning, economic development, and engineering. Um, thinking about parcel assemblage. One of the major, um, challenges to the site is the number of landowners and the number of parcels. Uh, so looking at ways, uh, creative ways to assemble parcels so that development more easily happens. Looking at project economic viability. What are the best economic tools to, to get things moving? Wayfinding and signage, how can you establish a brand? I believe the city is already, is beginning to embark on a branding study for the station area, which is great. Um, pedestrian cycling connectivity. Again, that's something the city is already working on with, I believe, the Tabor connections. Um, and then pop-up and temporary events. Once the station opens, how can you leverage the excitement over a train, um, towards development and, and turn the site into an asset for the community? That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Ken, maybe, maybe I'll just kind of give, go over an update of what we've been doing at a staff level, uh, in the time that's lapsed since the, uh, the voters approved the, the 2E ballot question. Um, we've established a, a staff, a technical, uh, working group. We meet monthly, um, as a group. And then, of course, tasks are ongoing in between meetings as well. Uh, so Joyce and Lauren and Scott and Patrick and Steve and a couple of other folks are all involved in that group in different ways. And we've, uh, I think we've been making a lot of progress. It's, it's an interesting, uh, area. It's a very much an aspirational vision, but one that we, you know, have tried to truth test in the, in the market with developers as well. So one that we do think is achievable. There's a lot of money we could spend, uh, that $12 million on, so we're trying to be creative about, um, using it in smart ways, leverage it, uh, in two ways, really leverage it hopefully with some other funding sources, as Will mentioned, some of those, whether it be grants or tax increment financing or, uh, partnerships with other cities. There's other jurisdictions up there that also may be interested in making some improvements to the roadways and other, uh, pieces of infrastructure. So in terms of that technical group, I think our first task was really just to put down, uh, a list of all those possible options for, uh, things that we could invest in. And then creating a really kind of refined, uh, ranking criteria of what would make certain projects rise to the top. Um, and there's really two parts to that. Um, you know, what, which, which projects would achieve our urban design, our land use goals, implement the vision? Uh, how could they leverage private sector, uh, investment? You'll all recall that the language in 2E is real clear, that it's intended to facilitate economic development and revitalization. So we're certainly very cognizant of that. Um, and then identifying, you know, what are the best funding sources for what types of infrastructure, right? Is, is a, is a metropolitan district really make a lot of sense for underground utilities, right? To pay for those over time with a bond or something like that? Uh, does TIF make the most sense for a parking structure? Does the 2E funds make the most sense for, you know, a portion of the pedestrian bridge? Uh, but just trying to, to identify which of those are going to be just for a variety of reasons, the most appropriate way to spend those different pots of money. Because we really think that we need to turn that $12 million into a lot more money in terms of trying to bite off all the infrastructure that we have that's going to really facilitate, uh, the, the, the overall vision. So we, we feel like we're making progress in that regard. Um, you know, it'll take a number of months, if not, um, more than one year, you know, certainly, to actually spend the 2E money in this. It's not as simple as just saying, well, let's just spend it all now. We could, believe me, we could. Uh, but we want to make sure that we're, we're doing it cautiously and incrementally so that we don't spend all that money and then realize, oh, gosh, all we, if we had $2 million to spend on, eh, we could have gotten this awesome employer that, you know, is completely consistent with, uh, the vision. So some things will take, um, I think, some time. Um, as, as was alluded to in Will's presentation, I mean, we've got a number of different, um, I think, parallel efforts underway. Uh, we have, uh, actively reached out to the outdoor, uh, recreation industry and have actually talked to some potential future, uh, employers in that regard. We had a really good meeting with, uh, the state now has, um, a point person in the Office of Economic Development and International Trade that deals specifically with the outdoor rec industry because, uh, in large part, the governor is, is very keen on growing that industry in the state for a variety of reasons. So, uh, we formed that relationship in a, in a real good way. Uh, we've got a various meeting set up with some of the people that actually do these coworking spaces. We've had those meetings in the past, but we're continuing those conversations to, to form a relationship with that industry and potentially attract some of those folks up here. Um, ongoing meetings with developers and, uh, and property owners. We're trying to renegotiate an IGA or some sort of an agreement with RTD that would kind of memorialize the partnership there in a few regards. Uh, things like the pop-up uses that might occur in that, in that bus bay area over the next several years. Uh, as counsel maybe is less aware, but the, the bus circulation plan for that area during the environmental impact statement, the federal, uh, approval process for, um, approving the goal line, anticipated that there'd be significant bus volume that would be part of the, the way that they facilitate ridership on the, at the station on the G-line. So there were as many as, I want to say 17 or 18, something like that, peak hour bus trips that were supposed to arrive there, hence the seven or eight bus bays that they've now built. So we think there's a real opportunity down the road to think about how we could really repurpose that whole area in partnership with RTD. So that's one of the things that we're trying to negotiate.
Because that's changed.
In that IGA amendment. Yeah, I'm sorry, because that's changed to, uh, a grand total of one bus coming at peak hour. So there's not going to be a lot of activity in that area unless that changes. So RTD is very sensitive to wanting to get operational. So RTD's very sensitive to wanting to get operational for a variety of reasons, but they'd like to stabilize the, the kind of the traffic patterns of how people are getting there, and we understand that. So, you know, it may take a year or two or three before we really are comfortable and they're comfortable that it can be repurposed in another way that, that really facilitates our vision and still lets their operations work, you know, perfectly fine, which obviously they, they care a, a lot about. So a few other things, I guess the other thing that we, we have in that, that draft IGA with them that's of some significance, and this was in our original IGA that the city has with RTD regarding the Ward Road Station, was the potential to repurpose the parking lot, right? I think this is something that they have done with, with many jurisdictions who said, okay, well, if, if you're willing, you, the city, or some city and private sector partnership are willing to come to the table and, and build us a parking structure that meets our needs, but also maybe facilitates some private sector development, they're generally willing to do that. You know, you have to negotiate reasonable terms with them, so that's another thing that this amended IGA or some agreement that we're trying to, to negotiate, that we, we're working on the details of, is something we're, we're working on and hope, hopefully will be successful in the next several months on that. As Will mentioned, we are intending to go under contract on a scope of work to establish what this concept is for this pedestrian bridge. They have a international, really, bridge design group that we can tap into, so we've, we've got a draft contract that after this meeting we hope to execute in short order. We're meeting with the property owners. If you notice the location of the regional park, that is private, those are two privately-owned parcels. We've initiated those discussions and are setting up a meeting with the owner of the, the western of the Two Lakes, the one that was previously owned by the City of Arvada. We have Arlene Tonawaki with Arland Consulting, a, a group that we've used really back to 2009 on, on some small kind of economic development and economic analysis projects, doing a TIF capacity analysis so that, you know, whether it's TIF or the Metro District, we're kind of making some land use assumptions and some densities and saying, okay, based on those assumptions, how much revenue might we be able to generate from some of those different funding sources that we think make, make a lot of sense? Had a good meeting last week with some of our adjacent jurisdictions, notably Arvada and Jefferson County, to talk about partnerships there. Again, the 52nd Avenue is, you know, goes through multiple jurisdictions, Ridge Road goes through multiple jurisdictions. We think there might be some grant applications that we could work on in that regard. Ward Road is a, is a, is a state highway. There's, you know, in a, in a perfect world, there'd be a great separation between the railroad tracks and Ward Road. That's a much bigger nut to try and crack, but still, you know, having those conversations because all those parties would be interested in that. As we mentioned, the branding effort is under, underway. We're using the same marketing and branding consultant that did the overall investing for the future branding that we've done over the last several months. Lauren and Joyce are gonna respectively do updates to the Planning Commission and Parks Commission in the next approximately 30 days. And just a, a note to all of you, once we have those conversations with the, with the property owners for the Two Lakes, we, we recognize that we'll need to do some sort of a, you know, planning process to really refine that vision of what a regional park might look like, how it might be programmed, how it might be financed, et cetera. So lots of moving pieces and parts, but we're real excited about the vision and the, the progress that we're making in terms of trying to implement that through 2E funds and, and every other kind of thing we can scrape together to, to get it right.
Wow. Thank you, Will. Thank you very much. With all of that, you must have more questions though, right? No? Mr. Matthews?
I don't wanna be the perennial naysayer, so I'm gonna preface my comment with, yes, I'm kind of excited about this. I think it's an excellent opportunity for the city. How some ever, I'm slightly concerned that we're already talking about going to the people for more tax money. I, I'm concerned that we went to the folks with 2E and said, we need $12 million, and if we come back to them in the future and say, oh my gosh, we need another 10 million, we, it might be perceived as a bait and switch. So make sure that we, and I know you're already doing it, but that we leverage and utilize that $12 million for infrastructure just as expeditiously and as economically as possible.
And maybe to clarify that, Larry, yeah, I don't think Ken suggested we, we would go back to the voters for another tax increase. We, we talked about using tax increment financing in the area, which would be generated from increased property values if, if development accor, occurs, occurs. And then also the Metropolitan District, that's also established in the area, has its own mill levy on its properties, which is, is a, would come from the development, again, of, of the other properties that they would pay the property tax, so it's not a, a city ask for an increase in taxes?
I understand.
At least that's, at least that's not what we're proposing at this point.
You know, I think I've already said that if I could support a TIF somewhere, that would be one of the places.
Yep.
I'm just telling us to be sensitive to the fact that I think we really pushed our voters very hard, our citizens, to get the 2E passed, and we just need to be very careful of how we approach expenditures up there.
Yeah, and that's, that's the intentions, as Ken mentioned, that, you know, we wanna, as Ken always says, we wanna turn that 12 into 50. So it, it tells our voters, hey, we're, thank you, we're taking your 12 million and making, making you more money on this. So I think that's all of our intentions.
Yeah, I, just the, when we do the TIF analysis and see what that capacity is, we don't know what that number is, right? Whether it's a couple million dollars or, you know, $10 million, I, I don't know what the capacity is gonna be there. We just haven't done even a backup nap and kind of tested that yet, but I guess the only thing that could come up is if, you know, we do have the, the limitation of 2.5 million in TIF funds that can be expended without voter authorization. So, you know, if it seemed to make sense to, to tap into more TIF than 2.5 million, we'd need to be very cautious about how we'd approach that, but it could be if we could, you know, paint a story where we're saying, where we're, we're showing how we're leveraging that additional TIF money, that those, it's not a tax increase, it's just authorize an expenditure of those funds from that incremental tax revenue that's created by future development.
I do believe you had a lot of, a lot of caution in your report, and I, and I know that the council appreciates that. Mr. Pond?
Well, thank you for the update. It's still very exciting. I'm just focusing on page 15 of the document, critical infrastructure investments in order of development. I, I suppose I just wanna to state whether you asked for it or not, that I appreciate that you've put this together and that the regional park and the linear green space are leading that list. I think for obvious reasons, not the least of which is that, that the, the barrier condition and/or the, the visibility or lack of visibility of this, of this site is, I think, all focused right there, right, right around I-70. These, the, the park concept and these water bodies are all kind of front and center and really set the stage, I think visually, for the things that happen to the north of that. And so I'm anxious to, to see how the, the other commissions look at this and some of the opportunities that I'm sure Joyce and her team will be looking at for opportunities in, in the future to develop that.
Anyone else? We're just sort of bowled over here with this one. Would this be any, you're, Joyce, you have such a tendency to get grants. Would this be?
It's all on your shoulders, Joyce.
Yeah. Don't worry about it though, just go right. Yeah. I don't know if anything would apply there, but we'll comment on that, all right?
Yeah, Joyce, you wanna speak to it? On possibility of what grants might be available?
Well, we'll certainly explore every potential, you know, funding partnership we can to, to move that forward. There's, there are several GoCo grants that might apply depending on when development occurs. We can go back to the table for an open space grant, so we'll pursue everything we can.
Everything we can.
Then there are the, the park fees for any residential development that goes in. We require a park fee and we, as Ken mentioned, we are speaking with a few developers that are looking at some residential projects and we've been kind of estimating what those dollars could look like, and it's significant on what could be put back into park systems in that area.
I think I've got Mr. Roman first.
He was first.
I have a quick one. Is, is the developer that was looking at the property at 52nd Tabor actively involved still?
Yes.
We met with them in late March. They've actually kind of expanded their team with some kind of financial advisors that are, I think, familiar with doing public-private deals, so that was encouraging. So, yeah, they're moving forward with the Townhome Project on the north and then, you know, we're talking with them about whether they might be able to do a denser product on the southern piece that would, you know, be, you know, four or five-story multifamily with structured parking, so to make the most efficient use of that land. But, you know, they're, we're trying to figure out whether the numbers work, so that's, that's ongoing.
But, but the gentleman they did bring on is very experienced, as Ken mentioned. He's, he's working on the Westminster Town Center Project, which is a very complicated project, and also their TOD, the light, the, there's this light rail station that they have too, so I think they're gonna, they're very creative and hopefully will help us figure out the finances on it.
So any idea of when this, when we will begin to see something happen up there? A long time, I presume?
Well, that's a good question. I, I mean, I think the, the owner, the new owner of the Hans Ranch property seems quite eager to move forward with the Townhome Project, so that would be, my sense would be, that would be the, the first thing you would likely see. You know, there may be some opportunity for the city to make some street improvement investments in the, the nearer term. Again, it's just trying to make sure we're, we're, we're not spending funds too quickly and, and precluding future opportunities that, that do an even better job of leveraging. So from a private sector, I mean, I think it seems like that piece, the northern piece of the Hans Ranch property is probably the one moving forward most quickly.
We had some encouraging news from RTD. Do you have any more on, information on that as far as RTD, as far as?
Actually got a call, yeah, mayor from the, Dave Genova Today, and Larry and Monica actually asked to have this on the agenda for the 24th, our, yeah, Ms., our, RTD rep will come out to give an update. But they were just in, Dave and his staff was just in DC a few days ago, and they believe, hopefully they convinced the FRA to allow RTD to start testing again on the G-line. I don't know if you remember, one of the last updates, they, they didn't think that the FRA was gonna allow that until they completely figured out the A-line and also the, the, I think the B-line, a couple of other lines that they're working on. So he just left me a message this morning and they won't know for a couple of weeks, but he has a good feeling that the FRA may allow them to start testing the G-line sooner than we thought. So I think that must mean they're getting closer to some solutions on the A-line. So that's, no dates yet, but I think some, some, sounds like good progress. I know you talked to him too, several weeks ago, right?
It was last week?
Yeah.
Mr. Roman?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when we talk about leveraging of the resources and looking at previous projects and the, the amounts of money that had been invested or leveraged, is there any sort of expectation of that leverage ratio that we can look at? And I know you mentioned a, a quick number of turning 12 into 50, but if we looked at the Wheat Ridge Corners Project, how does that leveraging of the infrastructure dollars that we invested in the Wheat Ridge Corners Project compare to the total investment in that development? And how does our total, the, the total investment in this project look as it relates to sort of our leveraging? So is it 10 to 1 or is it, what's the expect, expected or goal that we're looking for as far as that leverage? To start off, that's a hard question, I know, but it-
And I think for le, leveraging for us means two things. It means, in this case, it means leveraging that $12 million with other funding sources, whether those be public or private. So whether it be TIF or various different transportation or parks grants, you know, there's just a, a variety of different things. So that would be one aspect of the leveraging. And then the other aspect would be, you know, how much private sector investment do we see? You know, I don't think there's a magic formula. I mean, I think when we look at public-private finance deals, number one, we look at them really hard, and, you know, you're looking at costs, right? And reasonable return rates and, you know, making sure all the assumptions are reasonable and nothing's bloated and the return expectations aren't, aren't inappropriate. So every deal looks different in terms of, you know, what that, you know, gap financing needs to be to make a, a project work that's trying to push the market, right? I mean, I think that's the challenge, right, is, as Will noted in his presentation, I mean, I think the market probably wants to give us on a residential product right now, townhomes, right? And that works from a market standpoint. It doesn't wanna give us structured parking, right? So those are the kind of things that you've gotta be creative about filling the gap with an appropriate amount of, of public money.
I guess that's just what I wanna make sure that we're, we're conscious of is understanding where, where our dollars are being infused and how is that either igniting that, that private investment into that area to cause other investment to come in versus us investing in other areas that may not have that same spark to it, but I'm not sure what that magic formula is or which project should be the, that catalyst or, whether the bridge is that catalyst or whether there's some other more, the, the problem is the bridge looks very visible and everyone can see, oh, you spent the money on that bridge, but then when you talk about water pipes, no one can see the water pipes, so no one wants to pay for them because no one can see them.
Yeah.
But they, they need to be there for, you know, that, that's the most critical infrastructure you can think of. So th, those are the kinds of things that even though people can't see them, they should know that we're trying our best to leverage these dollars and to make sure that they're going as far as we can get them, as far down the track as possible.
Yeah, that's a great comment and great question, and we, we talked a lot about that when we put the criteria together, that Ken mentioned earlier, on how we would look at spending the dollars. And I mean, example of the bridge, it's like, would we, would we build the bridge right away if there's not, if it's not gonna leverage some type of development on either side of the tracks? Probably not.
No.
But if, if there's, you know, Google comes in and wants to be on both sides for some reason, of course, I think we're gonna probably say, well, maybe the bridge needs to be built. So that, yeah, those are definitely things we're looking at. But like Ken said, there's no formula right now, so I think it's kind of piecemeal and, depending on how the projects come and at what timing, is, timing's gonna be a lot of it too.
Mr. Matthews?
Just have, have we talked to the folks up there, both Dry and Wet Utilities, as far as what their existing capacity is and what might be involved there for them to meet future needs?
We, we have. It's another great question, and that's the good news. There's a lot of capacity, both from sanitary and water. Yeah, no real major trunk line updates, just typical kind of local improvements that'll be needed. And the Jolly Rancher site, interestingly enough, has a lot of water. Apparently that's a water-intensive use. They've got just kind of obscene amount of water. They've got like a three-inch, a two-inch, and a couple inch and a half water lines. I mean, it's, it's a lot of water.
One area that we are investigating further though, Larry, is the stormwater detention, retention, and, and cleaning and, and as Ken mentioned, we're trying to, certain parcels we'd like as dense as possible, the ones that are close to the station, but they don't maybe have enough room for parking and we can't build a structure per se, and so how can we figure out how to make more regional quality ponds, water, stormwater quality ponds, so that you don't have, every parcel doesn't have to have its own. You know, there's been tons of drainage work done up there, millions of dollars already put in, but the, the pond that is just to the east of the station area that's been constructed is big enough today to handle current flows. And, you know, there's been a new huge pipe put into Ridge Road, but so we're looking at other options. Can we, can we route stuff down Ward instead to provide more capacity in the current pond? And so that's one area that we're still looking at.
Yeah, and just a, a little more of an update on that too. We, we had a, a meeting with a drainage consulting engineer in firm that we've used in the past and who are very familiar with the, the drainage in this area to talk about, you know, what those options might, might look like. So they're gonna get us a scope of work here in the next couple of weeks to tell us how much that would cost, what the-
how much that would cost, what the timing would look like. You know, the, the question there is going to be, you know, what does the math look like, right? I mean, can you, are you getting enough additional density by getting rid of the need for onsite stormwater ponds? And is to pay for whatever you're, you're building offsite? If it costs more than what you're getting in terms of additional density, you still might want to do it if, if it's close because it's, you know, you're meeting your urban design goals and getting the, the placemaking, but, but you, but you've got to look harder at the math because it, it can get pretty expensive.
I, Ken, I would say that this is invest, sort of investing in the extension of our city. This area is an extension of that, and so I'm glad to hear you're taking in the advice from landowners that are presently there, our citizens, as well as developers, and looking at it as a complete area that, I don't know that it has to pay back, but it needs to be something that's our vision and that we're proud of when it's done. Any other questions? Thank you.
So tonight, we're just kind of, we just kind of maybe get a consensus or a head nod if, if, if you're all still with us on this vision and to affirm the different components that we've, that Ken and Will laid out. If you are, we're gonna, we're gonna hit it hard after this, and we've been doing a lot of work in the backgrounds here, but we're going to hit it hard, even harder with meeting with property owners and developers and with this vision in mind.
Amazing.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
Very good. I think, let's, let's see, do we have any?
Please go.
I think that is. I can't find my first page right now, but I know that would be reports on any committees. Ms. Davis.
Just quickly, we have a renewal Wheat Ridge meeting tomorrow. Six o'clock, here.
Here, okay. Anything else? Anybody? Ms. Wooden.
I just wanted to mention again that this Wednesday is the open house for Martenson Dedication, and it is at 3:30 to 5:00, and it says the program begins at 3:45. You'll be able to walk around the school and look at it. And just because I didn't get to mention it earlier when Zach mentioned the broken windows, I do know when I toured the school previously, there were reasons that Director John McDonald had for those broken windows, and part of it had to do with some of the training. So if you're interested, or if anyone else is interested, please go to the open house and ask Mr. McDonald. He's very proud of that facility, and he, they have added some wonderful features for training for SWAT and police. So it's a great facility, please drop by. And also keep in mind, if you ever went to Everett Middle School, May 10th, open house from 4:30 to 8:00.
Anyone else? Nope. Well, then I bless.